Yes, let's begin the recording.
Recording in progress.
We're recording. It's March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a special meeting of the town council. On November seventh, an act was passed that allows us to meet in this format. But I do want to call attention to the fact that this meeting is accessible in real time via Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media Channel Seventeen and on live stream at amherstmedia.org. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the March twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three Town Council meeting to order at six thirty-three. I'm going to first call on counselors, and then I'll be turning to Andy Steinberg, Chair of the Finance Committee, to call the Finance Committee to order as well, given that this is a joint meeting. Um, at, uh, so when I call on you, just unmute your mic, say "present" and go back. Shalini Balmil.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johannicky.
Present.
Anika Lopes.
Present.
Michelle Miller.
Present.
Dorothy Pam. I'll wait for Dorothy. Pam Rooney.
Here.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub.
Present.
Alicia Walker.
Here.
Thank you. Andy, would you please go ahead and call the Finance Committee to order?
Yes, I call the Finance Committee to order. There is a quorum of the committee present. There are two resident members of the committee who are not counselors who are also present, and I need to confirm that they can hear me and we can hear them. Bob Hegner.
Present.
And Matt Holloway.
Present.
Okay, and so I do know, as I did last time, we had a joint meeting that the president of the council is chairing the meeting. I urge all members of the Finance Committee to feel free to raise hands at any appropriate time with questions and comments, but it's really up to the president to determine who to call.
Thank you. There is no chat room for this meeting. If you have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. Use the raised hand button, and if technical difficulties arise, we'll determine what to do at the time. I also want to note that there is no change in the order of this special meeting agenda as posted. There are no announcements that I'm going to spend time on tonight. We're going to go directly to presentations and discussions. I just want to note, as we go into that, there is no vote taken tonight. The purpose of the special meeting of the Town Council, which includes public comment in this case, is to hear from the Town Manager and our Finance Director regarding the finances relative to the elementary school appropriation and bonding in the context of financing the four building projects. It's to hear from the public regarding these issues, in addition to the emails that we have already received and general public comment. It's to make suggestions for consideration to the Finance Committee regarding their recommendations about the elementary school appropriation and bonding in the context of financing for building projects. There will be no votes regarding the appropriation and bonding this evening. The vote of the Town Council must, by order of the Charter, follow a public forum regarding appropriations and bonding, which is presently scheduled for April third. With that, I'm going to call on the, um, let me also mention, we're going to have a presentation. Then it will be an opportunity for counselors to discuss, um, make comments, et cetera. Then we'll move to public comment, and then we'll go back to counselor discussion and conclude the meeting and adjourn. I also want to ask, since you've joined us, Dorothy, can you hear us? Yes, I can. Thank you. All right, with that, any other comment? Thank you. I was reading from my script. Alicia, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Lynn. I just had a few questions in regards to the opening statement that you just made. One of them being that my understanding was that the purpose for this meeting was for us to have more time to have conversation about this matter as a full council and not necessarily to get another presentation. That was not my understanding of what this meeting was going to be, and so I'm slightly confused about why we're having another presentation before we have council discussion. And I also am slightly confused as to why we were having the presentation before public comment. Because again, my understanding of this meeting, when we declared it last week at the council meeting, was that we didn't have enough time to discuss the topic that we were already discussing, and so that we wanted more time for council discussion. And so I'm hoping that we could start with public comment and then use a majority of this meeting for council discussion.
Alicia, thank you for that comment. Let me just mention that the presentation that you see tonight has additional information to that that was presented at the Finance Committee meeting. And so I think it's important to go ahead. I think it's important for all the people in the audience, as well as the people in the room to see that presentation. And with regard to public comment, I think it's also important for the public to see the presentation and to resonate with the presentation and the counselor comments. So at this point, the agenda will remain as it is.
Okay, thank you, but I also have another thing that I would like to challenge, and that is that no votes would happen. I think it was also, you stated at the last meeting that a counselor could put a motion on the floor at any time, and I would like to reserve that right as a counselor even in this meeting. But I am okay to start with the presentation, so I would just like to make those statements and proceed with the meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Paul, I'm going to start with you, and then you can move to Sean.
Thank you. So we did make a updated brief presentation. Some of it is some information you've seen before, but there's some things that counselors have asked about that we've added to this. So we'll expedite it because I know you'd really want to reserve time for the council to have the discussion. So Sean put together a nice presentation. I just turned it over to him.
All right, so can everybody hear me? This is the first time being in the room for a while, so I apologize as I work through the logistics of talking into the mic and managing the slides at the same time. So, so thank you. This presentation, the main purpose is to address some of the questions that were brought up last time and provide some additional information. It's a little disjointed because it really is responding to the questions that we heard. So as we go through it, if it feels like we're changing topics, it's because we are. We're kind of bouncing around from one question to another. Bless you. So the agenda, we're going to do a quick project update. We'll talk about how this project fits into the four building projects. We'll get back to talking about the reserve levels and the planning around that. We'll look at what the town has done to reduce the impact on taxpayers, make Amherst more affordable, and how we can support residents in need. We'll look at what else can be done, and then we will look at some additional information, some follow-ups from last time. So tonight's goal, as I understand it, is for the council to provide input to the Finance Committee for their meeting tomorrow to help them make the decision on when they make a recommendation back to the council, how, what level of reserves to include in that recommendation. Currently, the debt authorization includes five million dollars, but we know that hasn't been set. The Finance Committee hasn't recommended it yet, and the council hasn't voted it yet. So the information tonight is to help give you some information, so you can give the Finance Committee input. And then the Finance Committee ultimately makes the recommendation vote, which again feels kind of circular, but it'll come back to the council. And really specifically, I think the discussion has been whether to appropriate five million dollars from capital stabilization or ten million dollars from capital stabilization to try to narrow in on the specific decision to be made. So, project update. So last Monday, the MSBA and some town officials attended a project scope and budget meeting where MSBA went through the project budget, they looked at reimbursement, and they essentially set it in stone until they vote. So we don't anticipate many changes going forward unless there's some mistake that's found. But there were some changes relative to the information that we had from before, so I'll go through that quickly. The total project budget is at ninety-nine million, two twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two ninety-seven. And again, it's higher than, higher than the ninety-eight million that we've talked about because it now includes the feasibility study. It doesn't increase the cost or anything like that. It's just previously, we wanted to keep the feasibility study separate, but the MSBA wanted us to put it all together. So that's been added back in. So the real true total project budget is this ninety-nine point two million. The biggest change that came out of that meeting is that our reimbursement rate was updated for two thousand and twenty-three. And unfortunately, it went down based on our current demographics. The previous reimbursement rate that we had included a, so the way the MSBA reimbursement rate works is that you have a base rate, and then they give you incentive points for certain elements about your community, your income, your poverty, property values. So the one that changed for us is our, we were getting points under the old reimbursement rate for poverty, which is that they look at the number of free and reduced lunch students that you have, and they compare that to the state average. If you're above the state average, they give you points. If you're below the state average, they don't. And under the previous reimbursement percentage, we were getting points. And it turns out that was due to some special legislation that had been filed that allowed the MSBA previously to go back and look at a bigger span of time, and she was your highest free and reduced lunch rate over that span of time. That legislation has since expired, so when they updated the rate for two thousand and twenty-three, they no longer can do that. And when they look at our two thousand and twenty-three numbers, we no longer are above the state average. Fortunately, we're right around the state average. We're not way below it, but we're not above it, and you have to be above it to get the points. Seems like a flaw in the system. We've kind of communicated those concerns, but it's, it's written in the statute, so it's, it's pretty straightforward how they calculate it. We have communicated this to our legislators. It's something we'd like to see addressed at some point, possibly as our way to reinstitute the legislation that was in place previously, so we will update the council if there's any positive news on that front. But that's why our estimated MSBA facility grant has dropped. Previously, we thought it was around forty-three million. It's dropped to this number, which is again sort of set until the, the project is voted on. So this chart, so that, that's sort of the extent of the changes. So this chart shows three options. Option one is what we were looking at previously, where we applied no reserves to support this project. Option two is the five million from capital stabilization, and option three is ten million. So the first three rows are essentially the same, total project budget, last year MSBA facility grant produces the estimated town share. From there, we subtract out whatever other funding sources are available. So in option one, the three point three million is comprised of the one point six million in ever-source incentives and rebates. It includes seven hundred thousand from CPA, and it includes one million for the feasibility study that will be repaid partially from free cash. It was, we did appropriation from free cash for two hundred and eighty thousand, and the other seven hundred and fifty thousand will be repaid as part of our capital budget. So when you add those three things together, it gets us to the three point three million. So in option one, the net amount that would be, um, borrowed through the debt exclusion is fifty-five point four million. That increased the impact for the single-family home on average. I think it was four seventy-eight previously, increased it to four ninety-six, or a dollar eleven per thousand. So that brings us to option two. Everything is the same, except for the other funding sources category now includes five million dollars from capital stabilization in that number, so it's increased by five million. That reduces the net amount to be borrowed down to fifty point four million and reduces the impact on the ever-single-family home to four hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then option three adds, does the same thing, but adds now another five million to get it up to ten million, and you can see the impact is four hundred and six dollars and seventy-three cents for the average single-family home. So this, again, these numbers, now that we have had the project scope and budget, they've been reviewed by the MSBA, they're set. Really, the decision now, at this point, is for the town to decide what it wants to do in terms of financing the project. So how does this all fit into the bigger plan for the four building projects? And I apologize that these column charts are a little small on the right, but essentially what it's showing is that previously that first gray column is the total cost of all the projects. So it's thirty million for Public Works, twenty million for the fire station, forty-six million for the library, and ninety-nine million for the elementary school. So all said and total, it's a hundred and ninety-five million dollars. This has gone up quite a bit since two thousand and sixteen because of obviously construction escalation and just things becoming more expensive. The next chart is how we proposed to finance it, or what we've been working under to finance it. So the first green box at the bottom are capital reserves. So this, this chart here is based on if we went with option two, which is five million of capital reserves to support the product, the school project. So it, twenty-five million from capital reserves is based on five million to support the school project, and then still trying to raise twenty million or build a reserve up to twenty million to fund the fire station. The next chunk, I think it's forty-eight million, would come from general fund debt, so this is pay, repaying for the Jones Library, the DPW out of our capital budget, and it also includes the CPA contributions towards the library and the school project, because that's also general fund debt. Next is seventeen million from private or other, so this represents the fundraising that is part of the library project, and it also includes the rebates as part of the school project. Then we have state aid, which is in the fifty million dollar range between the MBLC and the MSBA grant, and then the rest is the debt exclusion, fifty-one million. And so what we're trying to show here is again how critical the debt exclusion is to this financing plan. If you take out the debt exclusion, it sort of brings us back to reevaluating all the projects, and it's possible that we could lose the state aid. We could lose, obviously, the fundraising would not likely happen, and it could leave us with just those bottom two green squares, or about seventy million dollars or so. And at the same time, the farthest to the right would be if we looked at repair options for the schools and for the Jones Library. Again, just ballpark, but the bottom line is we would not be able to address all the needs of all the buildings without state aid and without some of these other sources of financing. Any questions so far? Okay. So reserve use planning. So since October, the plan for reserves has been to build it to a balance of twenty million to construct a new fire station without debt. And mainly, primary reason for that is financing through debt is very expensive right now relative to where it's been the last few years. Interest rates are up into the four percent range, and so we really need to try to knock off one of these projects without borrowing, because when you add in the additional interest cost, it takes a big chunk out of the funds that the town has available for capital. And so based on our current reserve balance and our capital stabilization fund, which is about nine and a half million, and looking at sort of our historical averages for what we've had for surpluses at the year end, we estimate an option one, where we don't use any capital stabilization funds, that we would hit that twenty million dollar mark somewhere between FY twenty-eight and FY twenty-nine. Option two, where we pull out five million, we estimate we'd hit it in FY thirty, FY thirty-one. Again, if that five million is replenished, like the, the proposal is to replenish that five million with possible tax incentive repayments, then it would be the same as option one, if we replenished it in, in a reasonable amount of time. And then option three is if we took out ten million, we would hit the twenty million in FY thirty-three, but if we replenish half of that, then it would be option two, which is FY thirty or FY thirty-one. So this is to give you a sense of if we pull it out, when do we think we'd get back to that target of twenty million for the fire station? All right, so this next slide outlines some of the efforts that we, we, and when I say we, I mean the global we. As a town, some of these things were driven by residents. Some of these things were driven by elected officials, town officials. It really has been a town-wide effort to reduce the project cost, but the number one way we reduce the impact on taxpayers is to reduce the overall project cost and reduce the amount that gets borrowed. And so we wanted to highlight all the things that have happened since the start of this project that have helped accomplish that, that mission. So starting right at the beginning, the original space summary for the project was around one hundred and thirteen thousand square feet. Again, this is one that was driven in part by resident feedback. The building square footage was reduced by about eight thousand square feet. And when you look at construction costs per square foot in the eight hundred dollar range and total project costs per square foot, much higher than that, it adds up pretty quickly how much savings you have as a result of reducing the square footage of the building. We, the school billing committee reduced the total project budget by five million dollars to the value engineering process. The feasibility study costs, we decided not to put that through the debt exclusion, but to finance that through free cash and through our capital budget. The increased MSBA, again, until about October, November, that wasn't really on track to happen for this project. I think town officials moved quickly to articulate the issue and get in front of the MSBA to advocate for this, and as a result of that, they did increase the construction cap pretty quickly, which increased our reimbursement. The Community Preservation Act request, that was from residents for seven hundred thousand, the MOU we have with EverSource, our Energy Efficiency Initiative. The Community Preservation Act request that was from residents for seven hundred thousand, the MOU we have with ever source on energy efficiency initiatives for another one point six. So even before considering capital stabilization funds, you can see millions of dollars have been reduced from the total project budget. If if these things were not done, the what we'd be projecting for an impact from the debt exclusion would be much, much higher. So one of the pieces of feedback we heard was around the affordability of Amherst. And I think we all know that rents are high in town and a lot of that is driven by demand to live here. But the town has worked very hard over the past, really for many, many years to make Amherst more affordable within what we can do. We can't do everything, but there are things the town can do and and this outlines some of them. So one thing we can do is promote increases in housing stock and increases in affordable units. So since twenty fifteen, including some of the projects that are underway right now, the town has added almost a thousand new dwelling units to its housing stock. Again, prices are driven by demand. So, you know, if we can increase the supply, that's one way to help offset the demand. Within that, over twelve percent of the town's housing stock is certified by the state as permanently affordable. We'll get you an exact number. We're trying to fine tune the the final number. We think it's closer to thirteen percent. But the town is doing well in terms of its percentage that certified is is permanently affordable. We've been working with nonprofit partners to again, create more units that are in that are affordable. We have one thirty two North Hampton Road, which includes twenty eight units. We have the Ball Lane project coming up, which went through CPA, which has thirty units, homeownership opportunities. The town has repurposed two properties that it owns to be developed into affordable housing, forty five units. And then we have the VFW site that was recently purchased to provide supportive housing and some other services. Some of that comes from our Community Preservation Act Committee, which has been very supportive of community housing over the last ten years. They've recommended over seven million dollars of their funding for community housing projects. The town hasn't has adopted an inclusionary zoning by law, which essentially says when there's a new development that's creating more than ten new dwelling units, a certain percentage of those units have to be affordable. And as a result, in the last three years, thirty affordable units have been created through that process. And those are things that it it's sort of hidden, but when a development has affordable units, it's not valued as high because the value of these developments is based on the income that they generate. So there's a a permanent loss of tax revenue when we do this, but it's the town's commitment towards creating affordable units. With the American Rescue Plan Act, about fifteen to twenty percent or two million dollars was allocated for affordable housing and sheltering. The the planning department provides tremendous support to the municipal affordable housing trust. And we're in the process of hiring a grant funded housing planner to help with some of the affordable housing projects in town. So supporting residents in need. So if Kim is in the room, I will turn it over to her. Is Kim in the room?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So some of the exemptions that we already offer are for seniors for those who are legally blind, for veterans, and we have a hardship and a tax deferral as well. Just briefly to touch on what these are. The seniors, there's an income and asset based requirement for the forty one C. The exemption that we offer starts at a thousand dollars and Amherst has adopted to be able to actually increase that by doubling that if you continue to apply and qualify. Many towns in Massachusetts don't actually adopt to be able to do that. So I think that's really important. So that is income and asset based and you also have to be sixty five and own and occupy your home. For the clause seventeen D, it is starting out at a hundred and seventy five dollars. Amherst has also adopted to increase that as well. So it will be three hundred and nineteen dollars that you get. And that one is just, you have to be seventy. You have to own and occupy your home and there's an asset requirement for that as well. Blindness is a little more simple. All you have to do is be registered with the Commission of the Blind in Massachusetts and own and occupy your home. For the veterans, there are multiple qualifications. Minimum again is just to own and occupy your home. And the Veterans Clause, you have to be at least ten percent service connected with a service connected disability. So there are different different types of percentages and then different types of of different amounts of tax that we can abate depending on your circumstance there. And then the hardship in the tax deferral. Tax deferral, you do need to be a qualifying senior. And the hardship is more for someone who has a a actual hardship happening. It's meant to be just a temporary fix. There are qualifications for that as well. Being disabled. There's a number of things that that we would go through with you if you feel that you're having a hardship. There's also the senior and veteran tax work off program where you can volunteer your time to work in a town office depending on your abilities as well as the town needs. This is something that you would either go through the senior center with Haley or through the veterans. The veterans office as well with Steve and you can get up to fifteen hundred dollars off of your taxes. Also, if you are someone who is qualifying for those exemptions, but you can't physically do the work, someone else can do the work for you and volunteer that time and defer that to your tax bill. So that's an option too that we also offer. So any, you know, any questions on those, I'm happy to answer. If you don't think of them tonight, I'm I'm here all day. So please call me or send me an email and happy to help with those.
So Kim is our principal assessor. I should have mentioned that first. Kim, what is the email for the principal for the assessors office if people have any questions and want to send those in through?
Sure. Email is assessors, so A S S E S S O R S at amherstma.gov. And if you prefer phone call, that's fine too. Our phone number is four one three two five nine three zero two four.
Thank you, Kim. So the the last bullet on here is for the resident emergency aid program. I know we've talked about this a little bit, but this was a ARPA funded program that's been in high demand. We're almost out of the funds that were allocated to it. And so I, the intent, I believe, is we're going to extend this program longer. And so this is for renters. But it's also for people in homes, anybody with overdue mortgage rent or utility bills are eligible to apply. So what else can be done? So one question that came up last time was about the rental or the emergency aid program. And I had mentioned how ARPA ends at the end of twenty twenty six. So one thing that could be done is community development block grant money could be extended for towards this purpose. It would look a little different because typically with CDBG, we would find a nonprofit partner. We would work with them and and the application process might look a little different. But we could put funds towards a similar purpose once ARPA funds run out. The second one is state advocacy for adjustments to the pilot formula. So this one, you're going to hear me say over and over again, probably throughout the budget process and throughout every other meeting, because this one to me is really the critical critical underlying issue that really affects everything we do in town. And it relates to Amherst having a large portion of its land as tax exempt. And the unique thing about Amherst is that on our tax exempt land, unlike many other places, we have fifteen or twenty thousand residents that live on that land. Many other places have large portions of taxes up land, but not necessarily that level of residents living on it that then require services and require all the things that come along with being a resident. So you'll hear me continue to say this one over again. We've started a process to work with our legislators to advocate for changes to this. And what we really want to do this is acknowledge that Amherst has a somewhat unique circumstance in this regard and to look at the formula and 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 kind of highlight the ways it's disadvantaged Amherst over the years. So this one, you'll hear me continue to talk about the third one, nonprofit funding and support from our community partner. So we have a number of community partners in town that we've worked with in the past. So far for the elementary school project, we do not have any, we have not been able to partner with any of these nonprofit community agencies or institutions. So this is something we will continue to look to do. And we hope to to bring back positive news in the future on this. Continue to invest in affordable housing and and growing all housing, I think will continue to be a mission, a primary mission for us to maintain Amherst affordability and to continue to expand the tax base. So one thing we've shown so far is the impacts of the debt exclusion based on the current tax base. If we continue to grow the tax base the way we have done in the past, that impact will reduce every year as we add more taxpayer payers to the tax rolls. So as we can spread out the burden of the debt exclusion, it will reduce the overall impact for the single, the average single family home. And then lastly, maximize project cost saving. So we have a project budget. Within that project budget, we have X million dollars of contingency. One of the things we the school building committee can try to do is to manage that project budget as closely as possible. You know, some much of it will be driven by the construction bids that come in for the project. But we can do what we can to try to bring that project in under budget. Once we have those construction bids. And again, anything we do to reduce our project cost can help reduce the impact for taxpayers and residents.
Sean, I just want to pause for a moment. Counselor Pam, Dorothy Pam has her hand up.
I just want to make a suggestion that our aim is to reduce the tax increase and or to lower it. And my aim would be to have it be around three hundred and fifty dollars more. And one way to do that would be for Amherst College to give us a gift of twenty million dollars, which I think would be would solve a lot of our problems and it would allow us to move forward in a constructive way. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. So a couple more slides. So now we're to the additional information section. So this chart is a updated version of one I showed either at the council meeting or finance committee meeting last week where we showed the the reduction to the impact on the single family home from applying reserves. And there was a column missing last time that I've added. So the column that's been added is the second one, which shows the tax impact from the debt exclusion at each of these property values if no reserves are applied. So you can see the reductions relative to what the increase is. So yeah, there are greater reductions if we apply more reserves at the higher property values, but it's relative to them also having a higher increase from that initial from the initial impact of the debt exclusion. And then this last slide is there was a question about how the debt exclusion may impact renters. I think I said at a prior one that we we believe it would impact renters. It would be an annual cost and and typically annual cost would impact renters. We don't know exactly how or how it will flow through with precision. So this chart is a rough analysis or a rough estimate to give some examples. And this chart is actually was actually originally prepared by a former town councillor George Ryan shortly after one of the meetings, probably several months ago. I've updated the chart to reflect the new tax increase because again, the the new MSBA grant information changes that dollar per thousand. So I've updated this chart to reflect the dollar eleven per thousand. So what you have are different types of different properties in town, what their assessed valuation are, what the impact of the debt exclusion would be. This right now shows that there was no reserves applied. So it's just the full the full dollar eleven per thousand. Then you have the number of units at those properties. And then you divide the impact by the number of units to get a rough idea of the annual increase for those properties and divided by twelve for to get a monthly number. So again, this is just to give people a sense of what, how would this flow through to the rental properties and potentially renters in town.
I want to take a moment. Kathy Shane has her hand up.
When when I go across, thank you very much for this chart. When I go across, this is the increase on the unit, not necessarily the increase in the rent, correct? I mean, you don't know the extent to to which it a hundred percent of it gets.
Right. Yeah. So so the reason.
I'm just, just so you've done something simple, like if there are a hundred and eighty units, you you.
Yeah, it's very crude. It does not take into account a one bedroom versus two bedroom, different price. So again, because we don't know exactly how they will apply. So this is meant to be a very crude analysis, essentially.
Okay.
But to provide a sense of if it was divvied up equally among all the units, what would it look like?
Mandy Jo has her hand up.
And that monthly or yearly increase is based on the total with use of no reserves, right?
Right. This chart right now assumes no reserve use or option one from the previous chart.
Okay, thank you.
So that is the end of the presentation. So I will stop sharing.
We're going to move to counselor questions and comments at this point. Bob Hegner, I mean, I should say counselor and finance committee. Bob Hegner, please go ahead.
Yeah, Sean. If maybe we could go back to the slide where you talked about the delay in or the the time element of repaying the twenty re getting the getting the the capital stabilization fund back to twenty million. And wasn't there was a, it was the different options when what the what year we would get the stabilization fund back to twenty nine. The question I have is the twenty million is for the fire station. And okay, yeah. Did you and did you take into account inflation when you looked at this because FY thirty three versus FY twenty eight, twenty nine, there's going to be a big difference in inflation?
Yeah, no, it's it's a good point. Again, so the twenty million right now, we we have increased it from the original estimate for the fire station. So originally, we were planning in the fifteen million dollar range. But you're right, as we go farther out, we either are going to have to scale back what we can get further or increase the amount that we have to save up for the fire station. So it is a trade off if we stick with that number and we go really far in the future. You're right, there will be again, we'll have to grow it more or really trim back what we can get.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy Shane.
You can stay on this one. You've emphasized the fire station, but if we, the building that my understanding is at risk of falling apart is DPW. And not just my understanding, I walked through it. You could see it. We have to draw on the stabilization fund for DPW if we can make a final decision on where it goes, correct? I mean, it, you know, so we're going to be needing it to pay off debt. So my my question is that you're 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 preserving it for fire station, but when I'm looking at the numbers, I think we need to draw on it for DPW as well.
So the plan for the DPW, and this was part of the October presentation, is that we proceed with it when we have enough flexibility within our capital budget to proceed with it. So there's no set date for the DPW. We may, if we secure a site, it may open more options for us to build it in in parts. There could be a way to do offices first or garage first. So there may be ways if we, once we secure a site where we could space it out in different ways. But the plan for the DPW has been when we have the flexibility within our capital budget within the ten and a half percent, that's when we would begin that project. So it's for the DPW, it's a little bit of a moving target over the next five to ten years as to when that will start.
I guess I'll just follow up because I don't think we have to solve all of this now, but I think with the focus on getting the school underway, I would advise we turn to the question of these buildings as soon as we can as a council. You know, so whatever that is, Lynn, but you know, a much more focused discussion about them. Thank you.
Pam, Bernie.
Thanks. So this is the same slide is a good presentation of when we would build up the reserves again. I can't do the math in my head. How how much percent, what are we building it up by annually, first of all? And second of all, what what is the rough debt amount starting for these projects if we were to proceed? Because Kathy just mentioned that we would be borrowing for one of the other projects, we would be starting to pay some debt for some of those from these same reserves.
So I'll answer your first question. I might need clarification on the second question. So for the first question, we looked at the the chart we provided last time. I looked at the history of contributions to the capital stabilization fund. Again, it varies pretty wildly from one year to the next, but we looked at the average over that ten years. So the So the percentage doesn't stay fixed, but the, the dollar amount was in the one and a half to $2 million range per year on average. Can you repeat your second question?
It was, what, what does? What are some of the debt amounts that we're talking about? Kathy mentioned that we would be having to pay some of the debt from reserves. As we started some of the projects like the fires, fire station or DPW. What do those debts amount to rough dollars?
So one of the downsides of being here in person is I don't have all my spreadsheets at my disposal. So you can, so you can blame Paul for that one. So I can send, I can send out the information on sort of what it looks like at its peak, but. To your question, there's been two, two. Versions of how we use reserves that we've in the past that we've planned for. The first version for how we use reserves was to finance all three projects that are not being funded through the debt exclusion. So the fire station, the DPW and the Jones Library. To finance all three of those. And then in years where. The sum of that debt, along with all of our other capital costs. And years where that exceeded how much we set aside for capital, which is the goal was 10% of our tax levy or 10 and a half percent of our tax levy now. We would use reserves in only those years where we exceeded it. And so when we were very early on before construction costs went through the roof. We had got it down to maybe. Five to seven years where we would have to use reserves to top off our capital budget to finance all three. And it wasn't a huge amount in any one year. It was in the $2 million range maybe per year, and then it got lower. When construction costs and interest rates really rose rapidly, that's when we updated everything. We looked at it again. And it became clear that using reserves in that way was going to be much less. Solid of a plan because when we modeled at that, at that time. We would have to use reserves going out many years. And there were some years where it was large. And so I felt uncomfortable with a plan that assumed we use reserves. 14 years in the future, 12 years in the future. When it was five, six years in the future, I think we were more comfortable with that. But when we updated again, the interest rates that go up to, you know, four to 5% and construction costs as high as they went. That's why we pivoted to this plan of building up the reserves for the fire station. Because it allows us to, A, lower the overall cost for all the projects by saving interest. And it gave us some predictability with the fire station. It gave us a sort of a clear path for the fire station project. But I can send you. Some of the charts that we looked at where it shows how many years it would, we would go out. If we did it that way. It was actually in the. October presentation, I think it was the first option in the October presentation. And. We, I put some of that in the finance committee presentation, but I can put the whole presentation which has the charts there. And then I'll answer that.
Okay, thank you. Dorothy.
This is just a clarification, and I'm sure I should know the answer, but is the library. Plan to draw upon these reserves?
Not in the current plan. No, the library is being financed. Through our capital, through our capital budget. And we're not using reserves right now to supplement the capital budget.
Thank you. Michelle Miller.
I have three questions. They're a little bit all over the place. So in your chart, Sean, on page four, in the column, other funding sources. You said that there was 750K that came from the capital budget. And I am wondering how that was determined. And then my second question, would you like me to go through all the questions and then?
It might be best if I take them. So how did the 750K? Get determined to come out of the capital budget?
Yes, please.
So the town authorized it. Through debt. And we haven't planned for it to be repaid through the debt exclusion. So the only other source. If we're going to borrow for it to repay it from would be our capital budget, like other capital projects that are authorized for debt.
Okay, all right. And then the second question is, where do the cost assumptions for the DPW and the fire station come from that? You noted in, in your presentation.
Yeah, so, so I think I've said several times that they are high level costs assumptions because we do not have schematic designs for either of these projects yet. So full, you know, fully understand that. But where we got to the 20 and 30 million was looking at information we could find on other projects that are going on in Massachusetts. And looking at the information on their cost per square foot. And making some assumptions around, all right, well, how many square feet are we looking at for our buildings? How many square feet are our buildings currently? We know that there in the past, there have been, there was a planning process that produced. An estimate for the DPW and an estimate for the fire station that were much larger than we can afford. But when you look at the square footage for those, for those projects, they were also much larger than what we currently have now. And so that's one of the trade offs we've had to make is we have the real, we have to scale back on how many square feet. We can build for, for our new fire station DPW to be more along what we currently have. We're hoping to, to still do more than what we currently have, but not as much more as those. Earlier planning processes assumed. They assumed much larger facilities than what we currently have.
Okay, thank you, Sean. And then the, the last question is if the library project did have to go back to a plan B. To do a repair, which you noted in your report would be estimated at 15 million. Who would be responsible for the cost of those repairs?
So, so currently there is an MOU with the library where if the project, the Jones Library project. Does not proceed. The first, I think, 1.8 million or so would come from the trustees. And then beyond that, it would likely go through the town's joint capital planning process, which comes from town capital funds.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Alicia.
Thank you. When and who made the decision that the entire reserves were to be used for only the fire station?
So the decision hasn't been made. Our modeling has went that direction, but the decision ultimately is the council's decision along with the town manager.
Alicia, do you have another question?
No, thank you.
Okay. I seem to have this thing where I can't raise my hand without jeopardizing. Being connected or something. I don't know what it is. So I want to ask a good question. Neither in any of this, we aren't accounting for. Repairs that we may have to do just to keep the existing buildings going. So for example, the fire station is 94 years old. Some serious parts of DPW is 105 years old. And we know the walls are crumbling. And so. Even to stretch this out another 10 years. I can't imagine that we aren't going to have to put some money into just making those buildings. Habitable.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good question. So depending on the level of repair. We do set aside. Anywhere from 100 to $200,000 a year for. Smaller capital projects and smaller capital repairs. So there are funds at the disposal of the facility manager. To target little projects here and there. If it is a larger project. That came up urgently, there isn't a funding source. We would have to identify either, again, those are the kind of things we use. If it was an emergency. Repair, those are the kind of things we look to free cash for. If it was a planned repair, we would have to work with JCPC and the town managers capital improvement program to build it into the projects coming up. And so it would mean prioritizing the money that we have available for capital among those projects. And this would obviously be one of the highest priorities if it was an urgent need.
And just along those lines. I'd like to ask, in this model, because the regional school is funded in a different way. It doesn't include the bonding that the regional school is doing that we also have to pay for.
So the way it is included is when we project out. Our debt, one of the things we project out is our regional school debt, debt assessment as well. So when we look at our capital needs that need to come out of that 10 and a half percent for capital. We do look at the region's capital assessment as one of the things that has to come out of there. Now, where there is still discussion to be had is if you look at the region's. Plan for capital. It's, it's robust as we go forward. And some of it depends on whether we get MSBA funding for their roof projects. They have a couple of roof projects and other projects. So we have projected an increase. From what we're currently paying, we've doubled it. But if we were to go, if the region goes through and if this committee approves all the regions capital projects. We would have to go higher with the regional assessment because it goes, if you look in their out years, it goes much higher.
My recollection from our four towns meeting was that there's a significant. Wall we're going to hit with the regional schools and.
Yeah. And the one caution I'll say with all capital plans that I've ever seen. Is that when you look in the out years, it's always scary. And that's because nobody wants to lose projects. You put them on the plan because you don't want to lose track of them. But as they get closer to the year in which they're supposed to be done, that's when you start seeing things get pushed back a little bit and the things that are truly priorities move forward. And some of that's just a mere, there's only so much capacity to manage capital projects. They require a lot of attention, a lot of. Direct. Involvement from many staff to do capital projects. And so when typically you'll see things stretch out as they get closer and the true priority sort of rise to the top.
Thank you. Mandy Jo, you have your hand up.
Yeah, on, I think it's the next slide actually that, that is the planning. You had in some sense a repair of the library at 15 million, and I just wanted to confirm that that was. An estimate that has not now taken into account all of the cost escalation due to construction costs rising and interest rates rising and all of that. So that number is probably likely. Significantly lower than it would be if we tried to estimate it again.
Yeah, so we've heard there's been different. Perspectives on what the cost would be if we went with a repair plan where. One of the things we've heard is that it would essentially be the same as what we would invest in a new building. That's sort of what this looks at. There is a group looking at a plan B. That's more phased. The total cost I can imagine will still be. High, but we're looking at how it can be phased over length of time that may stretch it out. So that's something that we will have. Available for the council. Probably later this year is a, a more detailed plan B essentially for the library project.
But total costs just as high.
I think we are, we are going to get more detailed estimates to produce the cost.
Okay, Pat DeAngelis.
Thank you. I, I have a, a, a simple, I mean, Lynn brought up my. Concerns about the costs of doing nothing for the fire station and the DPW, et cetera. And, but I, I want to flip back to, to make sure that I've gotten this very clear. If we do nothing and go for the debt exclusion override, we don't reduce the. Amount by 5 million or 10 million. We're going to be, people are going to be paying a dollar and 11 cents per thousand. And if. We put 5 million in, which we think we can get reimbursed. We'd be saving 10 cents per thousand. And if we did the 10 million. We'd be saving. Taxpayers would be saving 20 cents. A thousand. And so I'm in that bracket of elders, seniors. I like the term elders better. My wife's going to be 80 soon. I'm 77. We have very limited income. And so basically I'm being asked to balance. 10 and 20 cents against the cost of. Rebuilding the stabilization fund and then having somehow or other having the money. To reward workers with buildings that are healthy. And again, I'm going to go back to DPW workers and the fire workers. You know, these are people that do all the dirty work in town. And we're going to nickel and dime them, and we will have to do that anyway. To save 20 cents a thousand. I'm, I'm really kind of wrestling. Am I right about the 10 and 20 cents or?
Yeah, that, no, that's correct in terms of calculating the increase from the debt exclusion. It's a dollar 11. With no reserves applied, it's a dollar and one cent with the 5 million applied. And it's 91 cents per thousand with the 10 million applied.
Okay, Shalani. Pat, did you have any further question?
Not right this second, no.
Okay, Shalani.
Great. Thank you so much, Sean, for. Showing the different ways that our town has tried to bring, bring up the housing stock of affordable housing. And also the different tax exemptions. I'd heard in the last finance meeting, one of the finance committee members saying that initially the, there was going to be. An override on all four capital projects. So it seems like the town has really been working hard. To reduce that and have only one. Tax override. Well, my question though was that would those tax exemptions that were shown to us? Would those, are those mostly for homeowners or would they also apply to? People who rent in affordable housing?
They're for the homeowner or it's for the taxpayer.
Right. So, so and I think one of the things we'd asked for is a way, if there's a way that we can create a separate fund. Instead of drawing from reserves where we actually, you have that slide that shows the. Bigger property owners benefit $200 in, out of the. Savings if we draw 10 million. So instead of that happening, could we create a fund that. Specifically is for renters? And so that was one question. Should I?
Yeah, I, I think again, that would be where we would look to CDBG to provide. To look to ways to provide relief specifically to renters. I think we've done it in the, there's been programs like that here in the past. And it, that's where we would look to continue it.
Okay. And my other question was, there was a statement made in the finance committee's report today that said. And I was looking for an explanation on that, for that. And the statement was that using more reserves now raises the total project cost of the four building plan. And, and it goes on to also talk about needing the reserve, reserves for our other capital needs like potholes and meeting those needs. So can you address that or explain what that means?
Andy, I don't know if you wanted to take that one or?
Andy, please go ahead.
Well, I think in that section. Were including comments from various members of the committee. And one member of the committee had made that observation. It was not. Essentially discussed at the time, but I think that what we were, what, what the person was getting at, and I leave it. To the individual member to decide whether to. Contribute to this, but. We recognize, and I think that that member recognized that. When, if, if we needed to. Postpone things, the costs were going to go up and cost of repairs was going to go up and. That is a consequence that there is, there was consequences. To actions that each action has a benefit and each action has a consequence. And I think, and so what was. Happening in that conversation was, is that it started with a. Presentation about what the benefits would be. And then it was turning to. What the flip side of it was and the flip side is that it would. Stretch out what we could do, delay what we could do. And. In, in particular, of course, it gets back if we did do the fire station. From cash as an example. From cash as an example. From the stabilization fund that as Bob Peggner pointed out in his question. It would delay the. Work and that there was just the natural annual cost of increase. That has always existed in any construction project. You always assume that it's going to be. Three to four percent at a minimum higher in the next year as it is in the past year. So that's, and then there's also the question of the maintenance of the buildings and keeping the building going. And the the risk that something major would happen to the building during that time. So those were the kinds of. Analysis that was going on. And I just wanted to actually, since I have a moment to do it and it's sort of along those lines. Alicia Walker asked the question as to whether there had been any action taken in October. To. Say that a, an option in this case, using cash for fire station, that option was adopted. If you look in the report that the finance committee submitted for this meeting. It says very specifically that the finance committee did not take a position in October. And I actually, since I was the one who was principally responsible for that report. I double checked to make sure that that was correct, that the finance committee receives the report but did not take a position. On any of the four options.
Alicia, you have your hand up.
Um, yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So going back to the making Amherst more affordable slide. The affordable housing units that are being built because and correct me, please, if I'm wrong, I don't think any of these are currently accepting renters. But my question for those affordable units is, do they have any criteria selection? Or is there any prioritization of Amherst residents who are being priced out of their units and who are looking for affordable housing? Or in what way are we guaranteeing guaranteeing that residents will be able to access or secure those affordable units?
I'm going to, I am so glad you asked that question because that came before the council. Particularly as we discussed one thirty-two North Hampton Road and the council clearly wanted it to have a preference for Amherst residents. And we were told that that really wasn't our decision. It was a. I'm sorry. We had, we did, and we did put a preference on it, but we had to write a letter to the housing.
The ZBA was the one that had.
ZBA and we had tell them our preference and we were very clear that it would be Amherst residents first.
So is that, like, that is confirmation that that is the case? And is that for a certain number of units or for all units? Because if we look at one thirty-two North Hampton Road, that's twenty-eight units. That's not that many families. So would we be offering all twenty-eight units to Amherst families? Or just a certain amount of those units?
I think we'd have to go, Sean, maybe you have.
That's why we need to hire this grant funded housing planner.
Right.
They could be here. I think we can get the answer to that. I know with the Ball Lane project, that was also part of the discussion at CPA. Now, the response we heard from the. I'm going to get the name wrong of the company that's, is a Valley CCA. The the one concern we did have those, if you do restrict it to Amherst residents. You could be blocking some people from getting those units that may need them. So you're, you know, you're kind of closing the. Who can apply to live in those units by restricting it to Amherst, current Amherst residents only. So it's a trade off that would be part of the discussion. But I remember that was brought up with the Ball Lane project as well.
Kathy, you have your hand up on this issue.
I was just going to add, just because I watched the way it worked up in North Amherst when the beacon opened up, the initial. There's a pool, it's live or work in Amherst. And the first time through, you got in the pool. With preference and then that came out and I, my, my belief is over time if things get vacant, not necessarily. But they, they were, they had four hundred or five hundred applications, four, four to one in terms of the slots. So it's that initial pool when it's opening up and we can double check that. I do know, because I've seen postings up in North Amherst, that a couple of places have vacancies for affordable units. So what I don't know is where you can find out that information. Because I just see it on a bulletin board in the, in the north, in the library.
Thank you. Alicia, you, you have other questions or?
Yeah, I have a couple of other, other questions. Okay, so that would be helpful to know, especially if we're going to be using it on a slide on how we're making Amherst more affordable. Because I think, again, my argument with asking for the ten million of the reserve funds to be used was to help. Housing instability and keeping people in Amherst who currently live here and whose kids currently go to the elementary school and who want to stay here. But will be priced out of town to be able to stay here. And so I'm looking for avenues to address that specific issue that's in my head. And so I'm trying to conceptualize how this will sort of offset that specific issue that I'm trying to address right now. So that would be helpful information to have also in terms of like affordability and what that actually means. Just because I do know that the Aspen Chase Housing was asked to open affordable units, which they do have. And I just want you all to know for reference that that they offer four bedroom units for four thousand dollars, three bedroom units for four thousand dollars a month. Their affordable units are two thousand dollars a month. And so I really want to know what affordable means for these housing units and how much. A difference that actually makes for actual rental prices. My next.
I can answer that one quickly and I think what would be helpful is we could probably have Nate Malloy. Our senior planner come in and go into much more detail, but my understanding with the units that are restricted as affordable. Is is a percentage of income or a percentage of your income. That can be put towards housing is sort of how it's, how they come up with the rent amount. And there's a, there's a scale that they use. So again, Nate, our senior planner can, this is what he does on a daily basis. We could get him to one of the next meetings to provide more details on that.
Good.
That would be helpful because, oh, sorry, yes, go ahead Lynn.
No, I was going to ask whether there's any way with a short notice, Nate could be available for the finance committee meeting tomorrow. We'll check on it.
Yeah, so we can certainly check and just to add to that, I have, I have asked Nate to do exactly what Alicia asked for, which is. Where are the units? How many are available? What are the rental prices for those units? I think that's a really important question for the tired council to understand. And we always are having this push pull with the nonprofit developers who have a mission of providing affordable housing in the Pioneer Valley. We are, we always argue that we are putting town funds into these projects. They should prioritize Amherst in there. They feel their position typically and their mission is to. Ensure that everybody has equal opportunity to be able to relocate to Amherst. It shouldn't be just for Amherst residents. And you know, sometimes we win, sometimes, but I think that's, that's through the ZBA process was the tool that we had through the comprehensive permit. Process for that initial. Allocation of units.
That's helpful. It's my understanding that there is a difference between affordable housing and housing which goes based off of your income. And that is subsidized housing. And so subsidized housing is thirty percent of your income for your rent. Affordable housing is just lower housing rental costs, not actually by a percentage of your income. That's my understanding of the difference between affordable housing and subsidized housing. And so that's why I have that specific question. Are these going to be subsidized housing units like Village Park and Olympia Oaks where you only pay a percentage of your income? Or are they affordable just meaning they're a little bit lower than the regular rental rates in this town?
Just, let me just, so the, the answer, there are the units that are set at eighty percent of the median income. Or sixty percent of the median income. They could even be at a hundred and ten percent and still be thought of as affordable of the median income. So they're priced according to the median income of our area. So they are fixed rents. And I think your question, Alicia, on the screen is a combination of both. So we can get you. Which ones are which? Because I think your question's a good one, which, which ones are subsidized and which ones are just affordable. And I think it's a combination of both on here.
Okay, great. That would be helpful information to have. And then my other question is the current resident relief. Things that we were talking about, the, sorry, I'm trying to go back and forth between the presentation here. Supporting residents in need, I think I talked a bit at the finance committee about how ARPA funds don't, wouldn't support residents in this specific situation at all. But so what I'm wondering though is, are there cutoffs or limits to how much assistance one family can receive?
For the resident emergency aid program?
Um, yeah, which I think I know the answer to, but I just want to confirm because I'm not sure. And then, again, I don't think that this specific program even matters or has impact on this specific subject. Because it couldn't be used to just pay an increase in rent.
Right, yeah, no, this, this would not be the program specifically for that. So yes, the resident emergency aid program has a one time or you're allowed to apply once for this program. Now, I have heard you comment on some of the issues that you've heard with this program. When we go, the funding for the initial round is again almost expired. When we go to look to do a second round through this program. It would be helpful if you, if you sent us your concerns to this program, we can look and see. Which, which rules are our rules and which rules are ARPA federal rules? And see if we can address some of the issues when we do a second round for this program. But to your point, again, this would be, this is really supposed to be an emergency aid program and it would likely expire before. The, the impacts of the debt exclusion really begin.
Okay, yeah, I, I would be happy to send over some of my concerns, although I think I have already sent them to Paul. And he should already have them, but if you all need me to send them again, I would be happy to do so. And then the last comment that I just want to make for right this minute is that. I've heard a lot of people talking about this, this or my proposal in terms of. Like saving or not being in supportive because they don't want to save a certain amount of cents per day, which doesn't make sense for them. But I want to explain and emphasize again that this is never about a savings because nobody is saving here. There will be an increase either way. So no matter what way we do it, people are paying more. Nobody is saving anything.
Okay, thank you. Mandy Jo.
Two questions, one of which, if we could go to the, the renter crude calculation that you did. If, if I'm understanding things correctly. Using five million saves approximately ten percent on the total tax increase. It reduces the total tax increase by about ten percent for each property owner. And using ten million reduces the total tax increase by approximately twenty percent. That, that's the one eleven to one oh one to ninety-one cents per thousand. So when we look at this yearly increase. You know, homeowners get a lot, you know, even though the percentage stays the same, the dollar amounts for homeowners. Are a lot more than the dollar amounts for renters, even though this is obviously not exact. So we're looking at those that rent in Amherst in the large apartment complexes. Might save approximately, if we use a full ten million. You know, somewhere between twenty-eight dollars a year and as low as twelve dollars a year. And I'm, that's not to say that that is insignificant. And I don't want people to take my comment that way, but I think we have to keep that in mind as we're thinking about what that's. What a reduction or a use of our reserves does to those that we are hoping to have the most effect with. If we're really concerned about affordability in Amherst, for those that have the lowest income. Is the use of five or ten million of reserves, the best use of that money, given the actual savings. Those that have those lowest incomes might actually see and given the concerns. And the potential costs of reducing our reserves by that amount. I'm, I'm personally not sure it is, but I'm keeping an open mind. My next question is. If we authorize a bond for the full amount instead of five million less or ten million less and in three years or four years. We. Bid out a DPW or a fire and for some miracle, either the state advocacy we have because for the. Public Works Building Authority or we got by some miracle a lump sum payment from. A college or university or the state advocacy around pilots has succeeded. And we have more money than we thought, could we dump that into. Paying off this particular debt exclusion bond early that would then do the same thing that what we're debating here does. But give us the flexibility to see what happens in the future unlike what we would authorize here doesn't.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of anything that wouldn't allow us. To reduce the debt in the future and replace it with another source. Again, the one issue being if we borrow. There are sometimes restrictions on, once you borrow the money. There's, you can only refinance it after a specified period of time. So again, I think we talked about this previously. The, the key would be to, for those sources to become available, become available before we permanently bond the project. But the, the other point is with the debt exclusion, the debt exclusion does not require you to exclude all the debt for the project. It gives you authorization to if you have to. So in any particular year, again, to your point, if something becomes available. We could potentially to repay the debt from a different source than the debt exclusion, that would be an option. Again, we, we don't want to, we don't want to, because we don't have anything. Permanent or that we're competent in right now. We don't want to. Say that at this point that we have anything definite, but we, it just gives you, again, the disclosure gives you permission to exclude the debt. Doesn't require you to exclude all of it every single year.
So the bottom line is if we get more money from. Whatever, we can. Lower what we're charging taxpayers.
Yes.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Yes, so just on to respond to that, and even if we were to take, well, let's say five million, which would. We expect would be replenished once the school is built with the energy tax savings, if we were also to take the additional five. Which, you know, so five is, we expect to be replenished. So we're talking about borrowing five, if any of those other funding came through. It, it's good either way, whether we take the, the extra five.
We get more money, it's good. I can say that definitively. Any more money for this project from an external source is positive.
So my question is, and I apologize if you answered it before, but I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. For, so, we're paying, we're anticipating out of the capital, the reserve fund will be servicing the debt. On the projects.
Well, it depends. So, so out of the general fund money that we set aside for capital. Will be servicing the debt for the projects that are not debt excluded.
Right.
The debt exclusion, any project that's debt excluded, its debt is sort of in its own path.
So I wasn't clear, since the library is coming from the joint capital planning process, but is that debt still serviced from the reserves?
It come, yeah, so the debt for the Jones Library is projected to come out of our capital budget. That's within the ten percent or ten and a half percent of the levy that we set aside for capital. That's where the repayment for the Jones Library debt is projected to come from.
And is that different than where the debt for the DPW would come from?
No, same place.
Same place, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Pam, Bernie.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to make a comment. Counselor DeAngelis was talking about ten cents and twenty cents. But I think we also need to remember that the ten cents and twenty cents is times. A thousand dollars of house or property value. So we're really talking differences of thirty dollars a year or sixty dollars a year, not just twenty cents and ten cents.
Correct. Dorothy, Pam. Jennifer, did you still have another question?
Yeah, I guess just another comment and, you know, we had a district meeting this weekend, you know, so I was speaking with a lot of residents. That even, you know, for people whose houses are at the, you know, the average, the four seventy-eight range. They're, you know, to save. The money that they would save on this would also be, I think, very important. So it's important for, you know, people across the board.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think. Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think, um, we don't, sometimes we do this unintentionally, but the value, value of your house doesn't necessarily equate to your wealth, right? Or it helps, but it doesn't always equate to your ability to pay or your wealth. Um, so we, we are cognizant of that.
Okay, Dorothy?
Just, just a comment about affordable housing. Um, yes, we're supposed to do our fair share, really, but it is, if everybody does their fair share in the region, then it kind of supposed to even out. And it's if you live, work, or have a child who goes to school in the town. But just to remind you that at 32 North Hampton Road, there will be no families there, no, there will be no couples there. It is an SRO for a mixed group of population, including some that'll be paying a higher rent, all right? But all of the rents are very linked to different categories of income. The 70% preference for people in the town of Amherst or who live, work, or have a child in the school, we did have to vote for it, you have to fight for it, and it does, it's only for the initial choosing of who can get in there. The Belcher Town Road project will include family housing. And I, I don't remember the number of units, but it's, it's a good number of units, so that is going to be very good. The Ball Lane will include family housing. But it's, um, getting people, the affordable housing requires that you hire special staff, and it seems that it's not an easy thing, uh, getting people through the qualifying process. There's lots of paperwork and lots of people who want to be on the list don't make it on the list. And then they put it in the lottery. So it is, there's just no guarantee that people in town who need affordable housing won't necessarily get it. All we can do is build more and hope that somehow it'll work out better. But it's, it's really a difficult process to be trying to get affordable housing. That's it.
Thank you. Andy?
So at this point, I just want to make it clear that I'm now speaking as an individual counselor and not on behalf of the Finance Committee. And Jennifer raised a question that I had been wanting to respond to, to, to speak to for a moment, and so I'm kind of following up on her, but also is planning to do this individually. I am very conscious of the fact that there is another group that we have been hearing from, uh, which is elder population who has been living in houses for a long period of time and are now retired and have varied sources of income, often fixed. And that, um, we've been urged to consider their situation also, and I have been. Yeah, but it, what it really comes down to, and I've thought about it, is that the proposal is to increase, uh, if, if the proposal is to increase, um, by $5 million, the amount that we're taking from the stabilization fund to, to a further reduction, you know, it, it works out to, um, I believe, uh, $40 a year was the calculation that we came to. And, uh, that's well under a dollar a week, and, um, the flip side of that saving, people, um, who are in that average home, 80, I think it was about 80 cents a week, is that, um, we are pushing back on two projects that town really needs and for, out of the four projects, um, either the, um, fire station or the, um, DPW facility with high risks for additional expenses as noted earlier, and, um, uh, really, uh, central buildings provide essential services that, um, the same population relies on very deeply. So, you know, I'm not sure that in the end, when that group, um, of, uh, very conscientious citizens really looks at the numbers and thinks about it and thinks about what the difference to them is and what the, um, burden is for 80 cents a week of additional taxation uh, for that owner of the average home, that, how they would size that up. But, um, I think that it's very important to focus on those kinds of realities. So, thank you.
There's two more counselors that have their hands up, and I'm going to take them, and then if uh, the council is fine, I'm going to move on to public comment. But Alicia, you have your hand up.
Um, thank you, Lynn. Yeah, I just wanted to talk, and Sean briefly touched on this, but I had wanted to say that we should also move away from the assumption that renters are the lowest of the income, and also that renters live in apartment complexes, uh, because people rent things other than apartment complexes, and this will affect them also. Um, and I, yeah, and so basically, I was just saying, I don't think this statement that the people with the lowest income will have the lowest impact is necessarily true because the impact of the increase is not based off of your income, it's based off of the value of the house that you live in, um, which will vary, and I, I think it becomes actually especially gray when we're talking about renters, uh, because I, I actually like, don't think we can use this chart at all to, to guess the monthly increase for a renter, because that is 100% the discretion of the landlord. Um, unless we're going to be adding regulations on rental increases or be talking about some kind of rent control, we cannot control how much a landlord decides to increase their rent based off of their tax increase. And I think if you're looking at, like, Brandywine, for example, because it's the first one, um, is having that large of a tax increase, but it's a building owned by a person, it, it's not necessarily that they're going to sit in their office and divide the increase by the number of units and apply that number evenly. They could just sit in their house and say, well, I'm going to just increase the rent a hundred dollars a month for every unit and call it that, because I know I'll make my money back and then some. And I think that that would be more likely to happen than this, what we have right here in front of us. Um, because again, that has been my experience as a renter, and I do not rent in an apartment complex, and I think that makes it a little bit more gray, uh, because the housing value or whatever the value of the house that I live in does not equate the rent that I pay for it. Um, if that makes sense. And so I think that talking about the impact on renters is a much more gray area than this chart that we have here.
There's, clearly, there's a lot more information that could be analyzed, and thank you for that. Uh, Anika?
Uh, thank you. I'll be brief. Um, I did just want to acknowledge, um, and I, I meant to do this before those victims whose lives were lost in the school shooting that happened today. Both children and adults. Um, so I, I did just want to acknowledge that and back to topic. Thank you, everyone, for your points. Thank you, Sean, for this, uh, for this presentation. It's really helpful to have a lot of these numbers broken down. Um, I'm a renter myself. I do not, um, rent in an apartment complex, and I have, you know, family members that have, you know, owned houses, you know, for hundreds of years, who would be greatly impacted because they're in areas that before no one wanted to be in, and now there are spots that people want to be in, there are spots that people haven't wanted to see low-income housing next to, and so their incomes very fixed, not necessarily match what, um, their increase would be. And, you know, I just wanted to point out through this conversation, I know that we all have a lot to think of, but you know, I hope we can keep this energy of consistency because we're having, you know, the same people talk about, you know, $50 of savings as if it is a huge deal when, you know, a hundred dollar of fees, a hundred dollar increase to people who would be in these same brackets was seen as, oh, we should just do it if it's, you know, for a different reason, and statements were made as that a hundred dollars is nothing. So I hope that we can, you know, keep this energy, um, and, and also amongst ourselves, you know, we have, you know, we have counselors making statements that, you know, there's only one counselor that has experience with Section 8. I know that not to be true, because I did not make that statement, and I would never presume the rest, that for the rest of us, so I hope that we, you know, can really do what we need to do to really, you know, buckle down and make sure that we're lessening the burden for all of our residents, all the residents here, especially in particular those who will be, um, most greatly affected by, um, and, and really think about it, because at the end of the day, and I'm just throwing this number out there, if $500 would make it impossible for someone to stay and retain their home, I don't know that for $150 would allow them to stay. It may make a big difference in terms of medicine, food, um, paying a bill. Um, and that would be greatly appreciated, but, um, I'm really, you know, happy to know and explore more of these other avenues that could potentially help everyone, you know, because who, in this day, with our global impacts, with our national impacts, we have looming around us, like, who couldn't use the extra money?
Alicia, you have your hand up. I was going to give us a break, but go ahead.
Thanks. I would like to make another statement, because that statement that Anika was referencing was a statement that I made. Um, and so I really wanted to speak to that because it's really important to me. And I had one other thing I wanted to say, but anyways, um, I did state that I was the only person in the council at the Finance Committee meeting, on the Finance Committee, who has had Section 8. Like, I have rented houses using a Section 8 voucher that was issued to me and my family. That statement is not incorrect and not untrue. I was the only person in that meeting at that time who has had that experience. And for someone to come out and say something about that in a meeting is very uncomfortable for me, because that is very vulnerable information for me to choose to share. Um, and something that is very uncomfortable for me to choose to share, and for me to choose to share it on behalf of my constituents who are in similar positions and who feel very uncomfortable coming into this meeting and into these spaces of privilege to share these situations. And so actually, the other thing I wanted to share is that when I was doing outreach and talking to my community and the people who I grew up with, who I know are in financial constraints, the feedback that I got from them is, thank goodness someone like you is on the council, because I could never stand in front of these people and make these statements, which I also completely agree with. And they, none of them felt comfortable coming to public comment today. None of them. And I talked to 20 to 40 people, not one of them felt comfortable coming to public comment and stating how this would financially affect them. And so I'm trying to make these statements to bring awareness in a roomful of people who do not have the same experience that I have. And I think it's completely inappropriate to say that that statement was not true, because it was true. And if it's not true, then I would hope that there would be other counselors who have the bravery to also stand up and speak to the, to those experiences and to support me and to to make me feel like I'm not alone in this, because this does feel very lonely, to be the only one who has been in a financial situation where I cannot feed my family. And to be sitting on a panel of people who do not understand that is a very lonely feeling. And so if there are other counselors who have shared these experiences with me, I would urge you to step up and share those experiences now, because this is very vulnerable, but also very important information. And I don't always want to be the only vulnerable, vulnerable one sharing these information to then be called out for that. I am not sharing this for purposes, for negative purposes. I am sharing this because I want my town to do better. I want my town to understand. I want all of you to understand what people in this town go through on a regular basis, what I have gone through on a regular basis, what I see on a daily basis. Some of the feedback that I got at the Finance Committee after making that statement was that they don't understand the need, that there aren't that many people who, like, I was made to feel that I'm the only one who experiences this. There's not that many people in this town who, who would be affected by an increase of $45 a year, that, that, that we would have to do more research and more outreach, because we want to hear from the people who that would affect, because we don't have the proof that it's in volume, that it would affect people in this town. And how isolating and dehumanizing to hear that, me, myself, when I'm speaking to things that I have personally experienced. I share these things because I think it's important and it's helpful for us to move forward. I'm not sharing these things because I want us to be stuck, because I'm calling people out, because I'm saying so- something negative. This is my reality. And this is the reality for a lot of people who live in this town. And again, I asked to have this meeting today because I want to see how we can help people. If this is not the avenue and we don't agree this is the avenue, that's fine. My goal is to help people in this town who will be deeply impacted by the passing of the debt exclusion override, because I also know, and I, I also support the school. I als- I also want the school to be built, and I want my family members, my friends, my constituents, I want them to feel like I, I put my best leg forward in their best interest, and I brought their, their truths and their stories to the table, so that their their experiences that are very real can be taken into consideration in a realistic way in this conversation, because it is very true for me that I had no idea how Section 8 worked before I had it. It's a very confusing, very complex situation, and so I'm sharing these things again for the betterment of this town. And I think it's very uncomfortable to have other fellow counselors or anyone in the community or anyone at that fact to say that I'm making statements that are not true when I'm talking about my own personal experiences.
Anika?
Okay, so just briefly, the comment was made about the council, and that's what I'm referring to, and that's what I'm sharing as a member of the town council. Um, that was a brief part of my statement. I think that my overall statement was really about the overall council's awareness of the, as I shared in our retreat and numerous occasions before, about the realities of how many live in this town. It is not a personal attack on anyone, and certainly not yourself. And I think that in terms of sharing one's history, personal finances, or now, none of us know, have met um, each other's finances, and I think that, you know, to ask someone to come forward and speak, it's a very personal decision. Um, and there, you know, may be those here that just do not want to and do not have to, but that doesn't mean that their actions and their responsibilities on the council cannot, um, support those in need, and I think that, you know, many of us are. So, um, again, this is, this could be a combination of reporting from meetings, this could also be the way our local blogs um, report, um, who knows, but just so, you know, you're aware, the communication was that it was just in regards to being the sole, um, town council member.
Okay, with that, I'm going to ask, uh, I'm going to call a break. We will return at 8:20. At that time, we will, uh, take public comment. And, um, I, um, I also just want to mention, while people are getting ready for their break, that there are 22 people in the audience on Zoom. There are others watching on Amherst Media. Unfortunately, I don't have that number. Uh, and when we come back, we will take public comments, so turn your videos off, turn your sound off, uh, actually, it shouldn't be on. Um, and when you come back, please turn your video back on. Thank you. You have two minutes to get back to your seats. Thank you. Let's uh, please come back to your seats uh, in about another minute. We're going to resume. Um. Please turn your video on when you are back at your seat. So at this point, if you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand. I mentioned before, there's about twenty people in the audience. Okay, we're going to begin. Right now, there are five people with their hands up to make public comment. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Okay, um, are you ready Athena? Okay, Carol Gray, please enter the room, state your name, where you live.
Carol Gray, I live at eight fifteen Southeast Street.
And we're going to start the timer for three minutes. Thank you, Carol. Go ahead.
I'm incredulous that no one has said a word about how teachers are on work to rule. They're struggling for a fair contract and we're not giving it to them. The current proposal from the town is still under three percent increase per year when inflation rates. Are between six and eight percent. The teachers are proposing. Three point two five percent in year one, four percent in year two, five percent in year three and six percent for Paris who don't earn a living wage. That is still a pay cut alongside inflation. The taxes of our town, that we have the fifth highest tax rate uh, in all of Massachusetts in our town. You said that we lost three million dollars in, on the school grant because we have fewer. Students getting free lunch. Well, that's because there are fewer poor people who can afford to live in our town. And working class people, teachers, firefighters couldn't even, many of them can't even think about buying a house in our town. Our tax rate is out of control. I was a member of town meeting and I. I could never imagine that town meeting would ever consider four capital projects totaling. Five million dollars in one year. When the teachers are on work to rule. This is incredible. I, I feel like. You're on a runaway train and somehow you're just disconnected from reality and you really got to get back onto the reality train. We have to fund our teachers. You can't have, if you have a family budget, you don't buy a new roof, two new cars. Uh, pave the driveway when you don't have money for food. The teachers are our food. We don't. Go forward with four capital projects. It's ludicrous. I don't know how this is going this far. Uh, in terms of saying that they're unrelated, there is a myth of scarcity that's being promulgated and it's just wrong. You say that there, that we're giving ten percent each year to the capital fund that comes out of the tax levy. I served on the joint capital planning committee for a couple of years and we gave between. Um, seven and eight percent to the capital budget then. You're skimming two percent more off than we used to when we had town meeting. Just so you can fund the projects that you want to fund without taking them to a vote to the people. You should be putting all four capital projects on the ballot and put down the cost of it. Do we really need a fifty million dollar library? I served as a library trustee for three years. If, if you, and, and that, both the library. And the DPW are historic buildings, you could be getting funding from the Community Preservation Act Committee. It's ludicrous to be having these huge tag items when people, poor people are being priced out of town, middle class people also. My neighbor is doing a GoFundMe uh, application because they can't afford their property taxes. We can't live in a town, I don't want to live in a town where only wealthy people can afford to live here. We have to do better, fund the teachers, don't cut any of those jobs, take it from the capital budget, stop these. High price tag items, you're not representing the people well, fund the teachers bargaining demands. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. There is somebody with a phone number and so I need to have you enter the room and identify yourself. And where you live.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, um, should I give my name and address?
Please, thank you.
Yeah, my na- my name is Vincent O'Connor. I live at one seventy five Summer Street. Um, before I um, make the comments that I had prepared, I just wanted to um, inform the council. That you have. Two levels of. Affordability situations that I don't think I heard an understand, uh, a clear understanding of. One, you have project based affordable units that whatever the cost of a unit at. Presidential or any other place. That those affordable units go to people. Who have qualified and who pay thirty percent of their income regardless of how much the units cost. But if you have a section eight. Which I do and have had for a long time and I'll be eighty two. In September. You ca- you, you can stay where you are if, if the rent for your property goes above the entry level. For that particular um, size unit. You can stay there as long as you're there, but if you try to move to someplace else. Where the rent is above the entry level for section eight, you are shut out and that is what. Has happened for most of the rental properties in Amherst. Section eight tenants are shut out from entry. So somebody who knows something about this needs to inform the council of it in writing. So to my prepared statement. I would like to say unequivocally that I will vote for, you vote yes, Tuesday, May second. To exclude the borrowing necessary for the Fort River School replacement from proposition. The proposition two and a half municipal spending limits. I will do so despite the fact that my landlord has proposed. A one hundred dollar a month rent increase. That is twelve hundred dollars a year rent increase which dwarfs. Any school debt excuse, exclusion related tax increase on single family homes and condos. If you want the school debt exclusion to pass with tenant support. Which I was involved in mobilizing in the mid nineties for the high school debt exclusion. The second time around after the first time had lost by seventy two votes. What the council needs to do and address. Is, is to follow the lead of Boston Mayor Michelle Wu. And, and find a way to address. Our ridiculous rent levels and rent increases. All that housing that's been built in downtown and other places. Are at a level one, that entry level, not for section eight. And two, um. It has, it has signaled the older uh, units in town that they can raise their rent. To that level and one, in one place in particular on East Hadley Rose has raised its rent six or seven hundred dollars in the last. Five years. So, sec- finally, I'd like to ask that the council and the public deliver an unmistakable message to our community's single. Unelected municipal executive. That if he, a Somerville homeowner. Again, pre- presents an annual budget that proposes to reduce. The elementary and regional school committee's budgets, recommended budgets. In a way that puts them out of the reach of a council majority. They, we should need, deliver the message that he will not get a third chance to do so in twenty twenty four. The, the school budgets are an essential part of any effort. To, to get the positive vote on the school debt exclusion and somehow um, the. Manager needs to get very convincing uh, information from the council. That he, that he should not do what he did last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Vince. Uh, Jeff Lee, please enter the room. We are going to resume to three. I allowed that one to go over because. Vince was sharing some information about the housing with us. Thank you for that. Go ahead, Jeff Lee, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Lee. I live at eight fifteen Southeast Street. And uh, I'm one of the people that Andy Steinberg uh. Mentioned who has lived in my house for many years and now on a fixed income. And um. Andy may think that the forty dollar savings i- is trivial being less than a dollar a day. Uh, or a dollar a week, but um. The number I'm really focused on is the four hundred ninety six dollars and twelve cents that, that increase brought by the debt exclusion. And I'm really struggling to. To decide whether I can support the debt exclusion. I think the plan, the school plan is a good one. I would like to see it passed, but I'm not. I'm not happy with the way the council is uh, trying to fund it. Um. And one thing you, you haven't mentioned conveniently is the fact that this four hundred ninety six dollar and twelve cent increase for the average home. Is on top of the regular annual increases. Which have averaged more than three hundred dollars for the past five years. So we're, I'm looking at like an eight hundred dollar a year increase for the next thirty years or more. So um, that seems unsustainable. And I really urge you to look at any possible means to lower this debt exclusion so that we can get a new elementary school. And. Since I have a little time left, I'd like to look at, at Sean's building project slide. Uh, it has a blue box, seventeen million dollars in private fundraising for the library. I don't think we're anywhere near that. The memorandum of under, of agreement with the library says they're supposed to be handing over the money as they raise it. I believe we only have five hundred thousand dollars that's been handed over. So, uh. That tells me that there's a strong chance that the library is not going forward. And if that's the case, I think you should be factoring that into the debt exclusion uh, formula. Take the money we could save by not going forward with the library and. And reduce the debt exclusion. Um, I would also say that you have fifteen million dollars in repairs if we don't go through with the library project. Um, that has never really been independently studied by the town. That's, that figure comes from the library and. Of course, they're gonna want as much money as they can get. And the other thing that troubles me is that there's no blue box for fundraising on the repairs side. The library has always been partially responsible for raising money for their. Uh, capital improvements and they should do that for repairs as well. So um. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Lauren Mills, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Yes, hi, good evening, uh, Lauren Mills, uh, twelve Long Metal Drive. Um, thank you for allowing public comment. I um, math is not my strength, but. I did want to share some of my thoughts um, about the new school. Um, firstly, I'll, I'll say though, um, that not dismissing the changes that the town has. Made with press and the D I. Um. How will they bring improvements? How will the town bring improvements to the diverse needs of the town? Without properly um, funding these two departments. And um, I have three children in the elementary school. And, and the, in the school system too, in the middle school. And so I do not see my kids going to be the new school. Um, and honestly, um, I just feel like it's too expensive. It's too much and it, from the presentation, it feels like. There is still not a clear way that the town finance committee has. Said how they're going to provide funding for all four projects. And I think from this point, that should be more clear um, to, to the town and the residents. And I just, I just, I just think that the. The new school um, is, it, the perception to me is that it is. Defining the haves and have nots. And again, I can't. Feel excited about a new school that costs so much when my kids won't even go there. Um. I also just wanted to add that um, as part of a, as part, as a parent and a community resident, I am asking how the town is ensuring that everyone um, I'm sorry, everyone um, regardless of, of where they live and what district they lived in, live in the town of Amherst, um, how will uh, the social and economic status of those residents be addressed? And um, also, sorry, um, yeah, uh, they, they are able to make, um, they are able to make a better, if we are able to make a better um, future for our children through the education system, um, it makes sense for um, people like myself and parents like myself who, who live in affordable housing to want to stay in the town, but as, as what's going on in the school system now, even, you know, the way our children are being educated is, is very um, it's very frustrating. Um, and so I just would like you to take into consideration those, those points in that perspective. Thank you.
Lauren, thank you for joining us. Maria Kapacki, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Thank you. My name is Maria Kapacki, and I live in South Amherst. So, I hope that this conversation going forward focuses on the question at hand, which is cat, will you use ten million dollars of the twenty-four million dollars that is now in reserves? That represents twenty-seven percent of the budget. That's far beyond the recommended five to fifteen that you wanna keep it in. So using that ten million dollars is absolutely feasible. It's for a purpose for which that money was designed, that capital stabilization fund was created. And I would really encourage the town council to focus on what you can do. Yes, we would love for money to come from other sources. We'd love it to come from the state. We'd love it to come from Amherst College. Let's just say their names, Amherst College and UMass and other places. But you guys have to do what you can do, and your primary responsibility as town councillors is to your constituents, is to the residents. I was hoping that we weren't gonna go down the same path tonight that I heard at Finance Committee, where a bunch of people talk about what they think is affordable for others, what they think is impactful for other people's lives. The people who are buying the lattes need to not be telling the people who are serving them the lattes what is going to be helpful to them. That's not what your job is. Your job is to make it as possible for people to support this school project, which I support, and I'm gonna be voting for it, and I want you to do things so that there is minimized harm to other residents in town. Please, we can afford this. We can do this. That's what the money is for. Please help the residents in town support this project, and please help them afford this. Don't make people come in front of you and tell you to prove to you that it'll make a difference. You have to listen to them and listen to the people who are representing them. Please use the ten million dollars. It will make a difference in people's lives. You can do that. And you don't have to wait for the state and the MSBA and Amherst College and anybody else. Please. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Maria. That ends public comment. We're going back to council discussion. Are there other questions and comments from the council? Michelle Miller.
I like how you're using my first and last name tonight, twice. Um, quick question on process. So, the idea, actually, just could you tell me the process, um, starting now?
So, the purpose of tonight's meeting was to provide an opportunity for more information to be provided, and I wanna thank Sean and his staff for uh, the additional information that you've brought forward since the Finance Committee meeting. I know we haven't answered everybody's questions, but we're trying to move it along. So, thanks, Sean. And the other thing is, and then the Finance Committee meets tomorrow. They have an opportunity to have additional discussion about their recommendation. That recommendation will be brought forth to the Town Council. On the April third, we will have a public forum at six o'clock. The public forum is required by the charter. That public forum will have an opportunity for people to speak. And after the public forum, if the Finance Committee wants to reconsider, we give them time to do that. And then we will move on to uh, the council actually uh, looking again at the language and deciding if they're ready to vote on the language with regard to the appropriation and bonding.
Lynn, can I just ask a follow-up? What is, uh, what is sort of the drop dead date that we have to make that decision by?
Interestingly enough, we could actually do it after the people vote. But we feel that the people in Amherst, um, the residents of Amherst wanna know. So, uh, right now, that is scheduled to be before our residents vote.
Thank you.
And I, let me just finish that by saying sometime in the first week, um, maybe beginning of the second week, mail-in ballots will be sent out um, for, in the week. I'm going to give you the actual dates. On April twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, we will have early voting available in Town Hall. And then the polls will be the regular hours, starting at seven o'clock on May second. Okay, that's, that's the process, the way it stands now. Shalini.
Uh, I just want to reiterate one point um, regarding what it's gonna cost us if we do um, take out ten million dollars from our reserves. I think that's the point that's not sticking in the sense that, yes, we want to reduce the impact of this on every uh, renter, every homeowner, and and, and we're not disputing what is affordable, what is not, because we can't, none of us can speak for anybody else. However, what we are trying to look at is what is the impact going to be of with taking those ten million dollars in the future? So we may be saving some money now for people, but what I'm hearing, uh, what Andy just explained earlier on is that by doing that, we are having an impact in the future on on what it's gonna cost us, which is gonna come back and be, you know, be borne by us eventually. So am I correct in my understanding?
I can only speak for how I hear it, and that is how I hear it. The longer you put out a project, the further you push it out, the more it's going to cost. The sooner we can build and do the other things we need to do, the better off we are. That's how I hear it. Other people may hear it differently.
Thank you.
Dorothy.
Um, I wanna speak politically. Um, you can be right and still be wrong. This is going to be a vote. People have to decide to go vote, alright? And right now, we're beginning to see, as we talk to people, a definite enthusiasm gap. It's gonna be, turnout is very important. People who are saying, I don't know, it's maybe this, that, then, and, and quote, 'cause we've given all kinds of reasons about the long-term effects, the short-term effects, and all, you know, people have been telling the truth, okay? I, I don't think anyone's been making anything up, and I trust and believe everything you've said, but when people get confused, they don't go to vote, alright? So, right now, I'm saying, let's do one thing at a time. Let's show that we have the will. I mean, I would say that the Building Committee showed again and again that it had the will to reduce without sacrificing the qualities that we really want in the school as much as it could. And we, the council, have to show that we have the will to make this as affordable as we can, even though we know that delays and income and inflation will cause and affect things down the road. Let's do the school. And then we can talk about doing the next, because otherwise, we'll have a great plan, but we'll end up with no school. We can be right, we can be, you know, uh, wise and efficient and all of those things, and not have what we need. So, I'm really asking us to not be theoretically involved, to deal this as a realistic problem of speaking and communicating to the public, which has to vote. They have to get up and do it, okay? And we have to tell them, we have done everything we could to make this as le- less harmful, less difficult as possible. That's it.
Thank you. Alicia.
Thank you, Lynn. Um, so just, I wanted to respond quickly to Shalini's, sort of like, it was, I know it was like a hypothetical question, but that's not actually the way that I see it. So I just wanted to share that, again, the way that I'm looking at it is that as, how we can help the residents and how we can offset the impact. And I'm not looking at it as the projects down the road and what delay, because all of those things are assumptions. None of those things are for certain at all. Not even the cost estimates for the projects are for certain. Not even the dates by which we will build them are for certain. Every single thing is an estimate. And if we go back into our planning and we look at how things have changed, almost every single thing that we have assumed from the beginning has not come to be true. Um, and so I'm not saying that it's not a possibility that there will be a delay. I, I know that that's a very real possibility, but there's also a possibility that we will find another solution and we will find another path forward, and that there won't be as much of a delay as was projected. There's also a possibility that we will have more funding. There's also a possibility that we can find better ways to rebuild our reserves. There's a lot of possibilities. The possibilities are not only negative. And I think that's the point that I'm trying to get across, is I understand there's a possibility for delay. There's also a possibility that we come up with a better plan. Like, things have to change. I think we have done that so far throughout this planning process, the entire time. We get new information, just like we got the new cost for the library, we got the new cost for the school. The new co- everything is new and everything is updated all the time, and when we get this information, we come back to the drawing board. We sit with the information, we pivot. I think this is a time to pivot. We have heard feedback from the residents. We have heard the cost of the elementary school that even last week came in higher than when I even wrote this motion. It's even more than when I made this proposal. And so things are going to continue to change, and I think as a council, as a body who is governing this, we need to continue to pivot as things continue to change.
Thank you. Shalini. I'm actually gonna skip over Shalini and go to Jennifer, since you've spoken already. Jennifer.
So I have a process question. Um, the, is there a motion on the table for the?
No.
Right, so how does that happen?
That motion will be on the table on April third.
And it will not be in the Finance Committee tomorrow? So it has to be made again? That's my question.
The Finance Committee tomorrow will have an opportunity to relook at its vote, and if it wants to make a different recommendation to the council, it can, okay? At the time, it comes forward with that recommendation tomorrow. Then it comes to the council after the public forum, and after the Finance Committee has an opportunity, if they want to reconsider. And then, on the third, the council has the opportunity to vote. If there, at that point, there can be amendments from the floor to the motion.
Motion would have to be made, though.
Absolutely, and there is no motion on the table.
Lynn, can I add to that quickly?
Yes.
And you may have said this, I may have missed it, so. Oh yeah, sorry, um, I may have missed this. Um, so tomorrow, so the Finance Committee made the recommendation around use of reserves back when I was discussing the debt exclusion. It hasn't actually made the recommendation yet related to debt authorization, so we will, we will need a recommendation on the debt authorization, which will include a number. Um, so they don't necessarily have to reconsider the prior vote, they just have to put the number in the, in the recommendation that they wanna make.
Thank you, Sean. It, the, actually, the Finance Committee kinda got into this discussion before actually it had been referred to them. And that's how we got to the discussion about the initial five million and now coming up with the additional five million. I'm gonna continue to go to people that haven't spoken. Pam Rooney.
Thank you. So I think I'm going to, I'm going to lay my recommendation for the Finance Committee on the table, and that I would like them to strongly consider the use of ten million dollars from the reserves for the following reason. I sup, I, I had in my mind approximately five thousand dollars that I felt would be a reasonable number. That's twenty percent of, of what we have in reserves. As the number in my head that, that I felt comfortable putting forward, something that would, that would take the edge off of this new ask for people. Um, one of the, one of the attendees mentioned the, the four hundred and ninety-six dollars for a, um, the median-priced house. This is start, this is starting to add up. Um, we have water and sewer increases. We have, we have a number of increases that people are facing. An effort to, to blunt that edge a little bit, I thought was very appropriate. In addition to the five million that I thought was an appropriate number, another motion was made and discussed in Finance Committee that, in fact, much of a five-million-dollar ask could in fact come back to us in the form of rebates during construction. So it won't be at the very beginning of the process, but somewhere in the, during the, the building construction, we will get reimbursed. So we're really talking about borrowing from reserves, the, maybe five to six million dollars, and I feel comfortable with that. So that's my recommendation to Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna? No, I, I'm, I'm going to people that haven't spoken yet.
Alright, um, so, there's a lot of talk about assumptions, and respectfully, assumptions are, are flying on all sides, right? Like, we're making the, we're making the assumptions in all directions, and I think that it's really important that we recognize that. I think what's, the assumption that this extra five million on top of the, so we're talking about kind of two chunks of five million here, right? And so the, the idea that this extra five million off isn't going to get passed on to renters is an assumption. Or the amount of that sa- of that savings, understand it's not savings as in bonus money, but uh, as in a lower cost. I think that those are, those are also assumptions. Uh, we know that, um, you know, folks who, who we, we know that rentals are, it's a capitalist society, and I won't go on that um, soapbox right this moment, but there's nothing to say that, you know, folks won't take this as an opportunity to raise rents anyway. That's a huge assumption, right? So I think that where I'm more comfortable is the assumptions that are backed in data and in knowledge and in study. And the difference is that we have that. We have that knowledge, we have those models. Yes, things have gotten more expensive. Inflation is crushing us, and that's not going to change. And that is an assumption that is a very safe bet, as we've seen these project costs going up and up and up. And so my concern is that when we, when we pull from those reserves in a way that's not going to get replenished, we are just creating a big hole down the street that, down the road, and that's not a pun about our condition of our roads, but that we're just gonna fall into, right? Because we've got a timeline for the fire station. We know what we need to do to save up to build that. I'm not clear on where folks think that impact's gonna go, and I'm not comfortable going out for a debt exclusion constantly. I think that that's painful. People should be able to predict and know, and we should be able to use those reserves the way that we intended and built this plan on. What I think the better plan is, is that the, the better way to go about addressing this impact is by creating systems and structures which actually support the people who are most impacted. When we pull from our reserves and we look at the amounts that are being saved, folks like me who are in the lowest part or below that bracket uh, of, of home prices, right, are not, that, that impact is much less than someone who lives in a five hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar, million dollar home. I would rather see support systems. I would rather see support systems in place that are actually designed to help the people who need support versus a blanket pull that makes us all have a harder time down the road. And those systems are possible to build. We've talked about ways that we can use, um, CPA money or community development block grant money or other, other structures to support the folks that need it. We got a great outline of the supports that we have in place. I'm very concerned that who we're actually helping the most in this is not the people who need the help the most. So I can't support 10, I can support five, I can't support 10, uh, with good conscience.
Mandy Jo.
I support everything that Anna said and I just want to mention a few things. We had a, uh, Alicia talked about flexibility. Um, and the ability to pivot. But baking an extra $5 million into this financial order that, uh, will draw down reserves, not the five million that's already there that has the potential and only the potential for that one to be paid back. We have not gotten answers that that's a guarantee. So we're already taking a risk that the five million that's already in there that we're pulling from reserves may never be paid back. If we put another five million in there that we never expect to be reimbursed, first of all, our capital stabilization reserve isn't even over at 10 million. It's not there, it's only at nine and a half million. Um, but second of all, we lose the ability to pivot because we don't have that money in the capital stabilization fund. We lose the ability to pivot if costs continue to increase because we don't have that money. If we put that in this financial order, we are losing our flexibility in the future. The flexibility we may need to build a DPW station, to, a building, to build a fire station. We're losing that flexibility if we put it in there. That is a huge risk to take that flexibility away. So when we talk about the need to pivot, we need to think about what we can do. And if we keep that $5 million out of this financial order and keep it in stabilization, but recognize that every year, we need our town manager to come to us and look at what can we potentially use to pay off the debt exclusion? Can we use some reserves based on the new financial outlook? The new interest rates that we're looking at as we look at this project, the new potential state money or not? Can we put more into that and lessen the burden at that time for our future, for our residents on the debt exclusion? We have that flexibility to do that at that time. And yes, we'll always have that flexibility, but if the five million is gone, we lose the flexibility to use that five million for the other projects. And what do we gain from that? We gain the possibility that we might need to if that five million's not there and we don't have the ability to pay for the other projects through our capital spending plan and the revenue generated every year. We have to go out for another debt exclusion. Are we willing to risk the building of a DPW or the building of a fire station for the savings that might be found here? I don't, at this point, I haven't seen anything that is willing to make me take that risk. Uh, and that, I think, is what we are risking. The need to get another debt exclusion for another project that this plan has, we've been finding a way to do it with just one.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Um, I just, I wanted to respond to, I, I see the 10 million as the five million that we have every reasonable expectation that there are energy saving rebates. I, I have to, um, disagree that it's iffy and that maybe, you know, possibly we might get some rebates. I mean, if there, there are programs, you know, that we, you know, if you're, you know, having solar on your house and there is a rebate program that, that that is something you can't expect to get. So I don't think this is pie in the sky, that the first, you know, five million or the five million that's already been, um, recommended and approved by the finance committee, we have every reason to expect that that will come back to us. It's, it's again, not something that we're hoping might possibly happen. So I think if, and I, I, so I'm seeing it as the second five million is the five million that, um, we're taking from reserves. And I believe that we have $24 million, not nine, we may have 9.5 in a bucket we've called capital stabilization, but we have $24 million in the reserve. And I think taking $5 million that we have a reasonable expectation, at least, that over the next five to six years, because we were told in the February 28 finance committee meeting that the next capital project, whether it's the fire station or the DPD, was not anticipated to begin construction for five or six years. So that gives us some time to pay back the five million. I realize if we don't use it, that's five million that's there. But I think we need to look now that at every point in the, in, uh, property owners and renters, people are at the breaking point. And I think any relief that we can offer at, in a whole spectrum of price points would be very much appreciated. And I think what I'm looking at now is yes, we may, I mean, I don't think we're putting future capital projects at risk, but if we're going to say we might be by taking the five million, my concern is not putting the elementary school building at risk because that's happening now and we need for that to happen now.
Alicia.
Um, thank you, Lynn. I essentially was going to say the same thing as Jennifer, um, pretty much. But, so I just wanted to say that I support using the 10 million, the five million that would have the rebates and an additional five million. I think that as a council, it is our responsibility to do the most that we can to help our residents and our constituents. And I think that is the most that we can do. I do not think five million with a rebate is the most that we can do. I think that's a little bit of us being cautious and trying to, you know, reserve things for possible things down the road. And I think the only people we're hurting in this decision and making that decision right in this minute is our constituents. Because regardless of whether or not we have to go for a debt authorization down the road, we're talking about right now and we're talking about later. So if we're talking about increasing, increasing cost for residents now with the expectation that we might later down the road be able to decrease it, what is the difference between doing that, decreasing it now, increasing it down the road if there is another debt exclusion override? Really, none of it even makes any sense. Like, we have a project in front of us right this minute that is ready to go right now. And so I am also in agreement that this is the project we should focus on figuring out how we're going to make pass. We have also, I think we have a mutual understanding that if this project doesn't pass, that actually jeopardizes all of the other projects. A lot more than using five million from the stabilization fund. A lot more from having to find five million extra dollars down the road than if this project fails and we have lots more millions of dollars down the road to find. I think we, again, we have this project in front of us right now, it's ready to go right now. And I think we should help the residents who are, are constituents right now.
Thank you. Andy.
Yes, I ended up deciding to raise my hand again because people keep talking about the $24 million total in reserves. And we need to get back to the slide that, um, Sean showed earlier. It was break, and actually, I think it was in the, maybe it was in the finance committee report, not today. But it broke down the, um, reserves into its components. Remember, there are less than $10 million in the capital stabilization fund. There's some money in the, um, stabilization fund for reparations, but I'm very hesitant and opposed actually to touching that because I think that was a promise made. Um, there's the, um, general stabilization fund, which I'm going to come back to last and there's free cash, which is sort of that checking account to keep, uh, keep things going so that there's cash flow. But the general stabilization fund, I have to go back again and I think I said this in finance committee, but not for the full council. Um, having lived through 2009 and being on the old finance committee in 2009, which was the year after the 2008 crash, um, things were really bad. And, um, I, there was, there's this thing called nine C cuts, which is when the governor can make a decision that even though money has been appropriated for a purpose, it can be rescinded. We were getting rescind, recisions of money that we had been told we had because it had actually been appropriated and that money was rescinded. And it was not just one decision, but there were several recisions. So every time we planned for the first decision, we had another one. And, um, if I think about, um, the miserable years of my life on the finance committee, that is it. And, um, there is no guarantee that that won't happen again. We all know what precarious times we are in financially. Um, and I will be very hesitant to say that it would ever be a good idea to touch what we have put into the general stabilization fund to take care of crises because, um, from my experience, none of you want to live through that kind of crisis either.
Are there any other comments at this time from the council? Finance committee meets tomorrow at three o'clock, that meeting will be on Zoom. Um, the town council meets again on the 3rd of April. Uh, at that time, we will meet at six o'clock for a public forum on this particular issue. Uh, that will be joint with the finance committee, so they will be called to order as well. And then as soon as the public forum ends, but not before 6:30, we will go into our regular town council meeting. Uh, with that, Andy, um, Alicia, yes, go ahead. Alicia, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, sorry. Okay, hold on, go. Is there any reason that I cannot put a motion on the floor right now?
There's the, really, the process at this point is that everything now goes to the finance committee and you're on the finance committee and so I'm assuming you would put a motion on the floor tomorrow.
Um, I am not available to stay at the whole finance committee meeting, which is always the case. And so I'm wondering if there's anything preventing me from making a motion now.
I, we do not have action items posted on the agenda, so it's not what the purpose of the meeting was.
But so does that mean that I cannot make a motion? That's what I'm asking.
Again, we did not post this meeting as anything other than a discussion. That was the purpose.
And Lynn, if I could just add, for the, for the debt authorization order, for it to be a valid order, it has to have a finance committee recommendation and also has to have the public forums. I, I'm not sure what type of motion, um, was going to be put forward, but the actual debt authorization has to go through the finance committee, get recommended, um, and through the, the public forum process for it to be a valid debt authorization.
Thank you for that clarification. Alicia.
Right, but mek, recommending the use of 10 million in reserves is not a debt authorization, correct? Like, that is not a complete death, debt authorization and I wouldn't even have the ability to propose a vote on the debt authorization, correct? Because that's not on the floor and that's a completely different document. So this is like one portion? I'm, I'm looking for.
So the, the debt authorization order includes it. Um, so that was one of the things we had to do in the, the version that was shared, I think, um, with council a week ago. Uh, the debt authorization includes all the funding sources for the project and it's actually the same order that appropriates the amount from capital stabilization. Um, so that, that authorization does two things, it appropriates the full cost of the project and then specifies the funding sources. And that's where we would, um, change the amount from the capital stabilization depending on what the council wants to do.
Alicia, do you have a further question?
Yeah, so I can't move to recommend that the finance committee include that in their recommendation. Or consider that in their recommendation, the use of an additional five million. Because the use of the first five million came also from a recommendation, so I'm not understanding why the use of another five million can't also come from a recommendation.
I want to, I'm going to just ask for a moment to clarify and we all agree that this is a good thing to do. Athena, you have your hand up.
Um, can I ask Alicia if you would restate the motion that you're trying to propose? I think if we were doing this formally, Alicia would make a motion and then you would rule whether or not it's in order at that time.
Okay.
So can we hear the motion, please?
Um, I recommend that the council suggests the finance committee consider an additional five million or the use of an additional $5 million from the reserve account to be included in the debt authorization.
Okay. So a motion's been made and the question is, is the motion in order? And I'm looking at Athena.
Yeah, can we take just one minute to confer?
Yep.
Thanks.
And I'll formally make the point of order, but I don't believe it's in order because we are operating under only presentation and discussion items right now. Um, no action items were on this agenda and open meeting law requires that the council and the public be given fair notice of whether, what actions or other discussions might take place.
Hold on one sec. Thank you for your patience. Um, we are back in session, thank you. Uh, it's so, Alicia, we're, I'm going to call on Andy first. And, um, then we'll proceed from there, Andy.
Yes, I want to assure Alicia of something that's, um, it's to, I think what her concern is, is partly expressed. I will recognize you at the beginning of the meeting or whenever you are available to offer a motion, to offer a motion tomorrow. Um, because I understand your concern that if your time is not allowing you to be present for the entire meeting, that you would be concerned that you would not be able to, um, have the motion presented early. have the motion presented early. So I want to assure you that you will have that opportunity if that's the ruling of the chair tonight. And I turn it back to the chair.
Okay. And based on the conversation that we just had, and I'm certainly going to turn this to Athena who's weighed in on this, and that is that it actually is out of order since we did not list action items on the agenda. And a vote for an action item or a motion and a vote would be an action item. Athena, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
So on the agenda for tomorrow, Finance Committee meetings tomorrow, they have listed a recommendation to the Town Council on the debt authorization and borrowing. And that's not listed on the agenda for tonight. Additionally, what I mentioned to Lynn and Andy was that Finance Committee is convened here tonight. So the discussion that includes Finance Committee members is being heard by them all. And I'm sure will be taken into consideration during the meeting tomorrow.
Alicia?
Um, thank you. I appreciate all of those things, but I'm actually not able to attend any of the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow. And there are members of the Finance Committee who are not present tonight. And so if this motion is not in order because we're under discussion items, can I wait until the things not anticipated within forty-eight hours of the meeting and make the motion at that point of this meeting?
May I?
Please.
I'm, I'm not sure that that quite makes sense. So your motion is to recommend the council suggest the Finance Committee consider the use of an additional five million dollars. I think the Finance Committee has heard that. And we'll take it into consideration tomorrow, so I'm not sure that it needs to be made as a formal motion.
But is there a reason that it cannot? Like, is it not in order? Or are you just suggesting that it's not necessarily necessary?
I think we're suggesting both. And one is that we've heard, okay, from not just you, but several other people on the committee. In addition to that, and therefore the Finance Committee will clearly have that discussion. In addition, it's always a gray area to something, whether something is actually legal under the forty-eight hours. Forty-eight hours are, you know, used for things that come up at the last minute, used for emergencies, it's used for things that aren't noticed. And since the whole meeting tonight was about this and was posted as a discussion, it really doesn't fit. Now, are you saying you will not be at the Finance Committee meeting at all tomorrow?
No, I will not. And I actually have a time conflict for all Finance Committee movement, meetings moving forward at this point because I'm not even available for the first half any longer. So I would like to find out if it is out, completely out of order, and I cannot make a motion within the forty-eight hours within that section of this meeting.
Point of order's been made, yes.
A week ago, I believe the counselor attempted to suggest a motion, and so I would argue it might not have been not anticipated within forty-eight hours and therefore not follow, fall under the forty-eight hour rule. But the, only the chair can deem whether the chair could have anticipated a potential motion from a counselor or not, such that it's not on the agenda.
Point of order. Can somebody please point to the charter provisioned and/or the rules that do not allow a counselor to make a motion, given the format of the agenda, please?
You're looking to me, may I, may I speak to that?
I am looking at you.
Michelle, it's the open meeting law that requires our agendas be detailed and sufficient that a, a person would know what the council would be discussing and voting on. And because there was no vote listed, no recommendation or anything like that listed on the agenda tonight, we're questioning whether that, whether or not that would be appropriate to take a vote.
It's my understanding that a motion can be brought forward during a publicly posted meeting from the floor at any time. And so I just, I'm really searching, just, just coming back to our retreat on Saturday and just trying to listen to each other and is there, is there a pathway here for Alicia?
Athena?
You need to take Mandy first.
I believe what Michelle is trying to say is that maybe she's challenging the ruling of the chair and might be trying to make a motion like that.
If the chair has made a ruling, then I will appeal the ruling. But I didn't hear the chair make a definitive ruling yet. So, and thank you, Mandy. I appreciate that, because that, that's, that's the trajectory.
Let me, yes.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I wonder if there's a Finance Committee member present tonight that would make a motion on Alicia's behalf at the meeting tomorrow.
Looking for the Finance Committee. There's Kathy, there's me, there's Andy. Anna is the fourth, yes, Kathy.
If this was helpful, I will make Alicia's motion tomorrow.
Okay.
I will make it as she originally made it. We did vote on it once, but I will make it again. I'm, I'm willing and able to do that.
Sorry, can I speak? It's just because I, my hand has been up this whole time, so I can't like re-raise my hand. But is it okay if I speak?
Please.
It's Alicia, sorry. Well, one, I just wanted to speak to the fact that this, the assumption that this was not anticipated because I have made this motion. I actually literally just made that motion, the specific wording off the top of my head. I don't have that written anywhere. And it's not the exact same motion that I proposed at Finance, nor is it the exact same motion that I presented at the council meeting. So yes, it was something that was not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours of this meeting. And two, I would prefer not to have somebody present my motion who doesn't support it. That sounds really odd to me. And I understand that generally some of the Finance Committee members might have a general idea as to how some of the counselors feel in regards to the suggestion, but not every single counselor has stated whether or not they support or do not support this initiative, and that's what I'm looking for. And I think that's what the Finance Committee needs, because they actually don't have a clear idea as how, as to how many counselors support this right now. I don't even. And so again, if this is not out of order for the forty-eight hour, the, for the topics that are not anticipated within forty-eight hours of the meeting, I would like to continue with my motion. And if this is not the time in the meeting where we're in that bracket, I will wait, but I thought Lynn was about to adjourn the meeting. And so that's why I did this. And so if I'm at the wrong time and I need to wait a couple of seconds to move into that period of the meeting, I'd be happy to do so. But I'm just a little bit unclear as to what I can and cannot do. Because again, we were also told last meeting that a counselor can make a motion at any time. And so I'm just trying to figure out where this will go.
And Alicia, I totally and completely appreciate the confusion around this. Sean, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to point out, there's going to, I believe there's going to be another Finance Committee meeting after the public forum, where the Finance Committee will get a chance to reconsider its recommendation. So I believe there's at least one more opportunity where the Finance Committee recommendation could be modified after tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, so Alicia, for the time being, there's some other hands up. Let me hear what people have to say, and then we'll come back to this, okay? Dorothy?
Yeah, what Sean was saying gets at one of my areas of great confusion. Which is when is the public forum? I mean, you know, I will say I just feel like I've been read round and round the mulberry bush a hundred times, no idea what's going on, this meeting, that meeting. I thought we were going to vote tonight. And so my first question is, when is the public forum? It's not obviously going to be at six o'clock now, on the third of April, because that's just before with the vote that we take. So we have a Finance Committee tomorrow, and then so, when is this public forum?
The public forum is at six o'clock on April third. The finance-
Finance Committee meet afterwards and, and discuss. He just said the Finance Committee will have a chance to meet after the public forum before the council vote. How can they do that?
As in the past, when the Finance Committee is present, before we move on to the agenda, the Chair of the Finance Committee asks the Finance Committee if they would like to reconsider their recommendation. That's done on the third as well.
Okay, so, so it is where I thought it was going to be. I, I do want to make a point of social justice here. The Finance Committee, which seems, and I was on it and enjoyed being on it for a number of years, to be the crucial committee for everything, is at three o'clock in the afternoon when working people cannot attend. Now, that is putting privilege, really, really putting it forefront. The major decisions that are made in this town are going to be done during hours when people should be at work. And I really, you know, how are people, we ever going to get the diverse council that this town needs and deserves? If we make it meeting after meeting, that, that if, if, so that you wear us down, you wear down the public, we don't get things done, and then you're going to be very surprised and shocked when the vote doesn't happen. I want the school to go through. I don't want to have this thing hanging over us. I want this to work. And you're getting messages. We're getting, I, I've been shocked to some people who told me they weren't going to support the school vote. I was not expecting it. I'm telling you, there's something going on out there, and you have to pay attention, and you have to listen, and sometimes we have to deal with things. Not exactly the way we wanted to do it, but in a way that'll make it work. Because I want to move forward. I want the DPW, I want the fire station. But first, we've got to get the school, we've got to get over the hump, we've got to get that done. And I'd like to see us focus on doing that. And Alicia has been really trying to help us today and telling us some of the things that we might have to do to bring more people along. So just please.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just, this is just not making sense to me. I, the motion couldn't be voted on by the the motion couldn't be voted on at the last meeting, and it can't be voted on this meeting. It's sounding like Alicia's motion can only be voted on in the Finance Committee? That-
And then it comes back to the council.
But why can't she, why can't we vote on a motion that's made, like even at the last meeting, which was an action meeting? We were told we, Alicia, we couldn't vote on Alicia's motion. I don't understand that.
Okay, the item is a referral to a committee, whether it's this item or some other item. If it's referred to a committee, that's where it sits until it comes back to the council.
But she wants to I, I was really under the impression that you, a counselor could always make a motion. It may not get seconded.
Okay, can I, can I just, I'm going to give further my analogy, okay? Suppose you want to make a motion at some point about something that's in CRC, but it's at a council meeting. That's, the, the item rests in CRC. That's where it needs to be made. We have had a counselor tonight who's on the Finance Committee, who has said they are willing to make the motion tomorrow. I will tell you as a member of the Finance Committee, I'm willing to second that motion for the purpose of discussion.
Yeah, I mean, the Finance Committee already voted on it, so.
May, may I help answer that question, Lynn?
Please.
So Jennifer, the, the Finance Committee made a sort of a premature recommendation on that because it hadn't been referred automatically at the point that Kathy and Alicia's motions were voted on.
And I will also say that Andy, the Chair of the Finance Committee at the time, suggested that in fact we shouldn't even be doing the motions, but there was so much upset about that that he went ahead and we discussed them.
So at, at this point, Finance Committee has the order to make a recommendation to the council. It wasn't an action item at the last council meeting because we needed a Finance Committee recommendation and a public forum before the council could act. So it would have been out of order to put a motion to amend the order because it wasn't, it couldn't be acted on at that time. And then a few people have said a counselor can make a motion at any time. Sure, but the, a motion at any time might be out of order. So just like in this situation, it, it may or may not be able to be voted on at that time. Lynn, I'd like to clarify whether or not you've made a ruling on the motion.
If it would help for me to make a ruling, I'm going to rule it's out of order.
Thank you. Now, an appeal to the President's decision can be made. That appeal could be voted on. If it were seconded, it could be voted on. And if it passed, then Counselor Walker's motion would be voted.
Okay.
So I'm making, I'm making an-
Go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, I don't know which order it has to be in, but we're learning here. I would like to appeal the Chair's decision. And I'd like just a moment to speak to my interpretation of why that is. Is that allowed, Athena?
After a second.
Let me look for a second first. Is there a second to the motion to appeal the decision of the President?
A second, Devon Goff here.
Okay. So, second under Devon Goff here, okay. Michelle?
Yep, so Athena said that a motion can in fact be made at any time from the floor. So I think that's part one, that we've established that is true. And part two is then deciding whether that motion is in order. And I have, when you say whether it's in order, in order according to what? Robert's Rules? And if that's the case, then please point us to where it says in Robert's Rules that this motion is out of order.
So, Michelle, when I'm, when I'm saying out of order, it's not just Robert's Rules. We need to consider the council's rules, state law, federal law, and so on. The Charter, all of those things to determine whether or not something is or isn't out of order. So at this point, the President has determined that the motion is out of order because I'm assuming, and Lynn, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because it wasn't listed on the agenda, which is in accordance with the open meeting law. So the concern here is that a recommendation to the Finance Committee and any kind of action item on this topic wasn't listed on the agenda. And the agenda needs to be sufficiently specific, and that is a little bit of a fuzzy area. So Lynn has ruled that it's out of order. There's been an appeal made, and now the discussion is about the appeal.
Yes, I understand that, and under the forty-eight hour rule, we still haven't determined whether this could fall under the forty-eight hour rule. And I haven't heard any evidence to why it could not be taken under that rule.
I haven't heard an appeal to that particular ruling. I think what's in front of us right now is the appeal, the, of the decision of the President that Alicia's motion is out of order, so I think we need to stick to that.
Okay, but if it's about the agenda, if it's out of order because it's not properly posted in the agenda, then if I'm hearing you correctly, Athena, you're saying that we'll follow through with this particular appeal, and then there will have to be another appeal at the forty-eight hour portion of the agenda? I, I think we're really, I just want to say that this is Alicia is trying to get a sense by way of action to allow the Finance Committee to have an understanding of where counselors stand on this. And counselors can certainly abstain if they're not ready to make that decision. But I, I am very, very concerned that we are making this such a, a challenging matter. uh, s- such a a challenging um, matter.
So the floor is open for the discussion and that is the only discussion at this point, which is the issue of the Chair's ruling and that having now been challenged. Shalony, are you have your hand up to speak to that?
Yeah, could we just informally, uh, if the purpose is to get a sense and give a sense to the Finance Committee? Could we all just individually say where we stand right now? I mean, I wonder, yeah, and that would take care of all of this.
Um, you certainly counselors are free to say whatever they want to say.
Lynn?
Yes.
The motion that's up for discussion right now is the appeal of the President's decision.
Right.
We have to deal with that first before any other motions can be made.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. So I'm not proposing another motion, but I'm just saying if you have that understanding, then we can just resolve this motion, but with that understanding that we, that's a goal, we can achieve that goal.
I appreciate that sentiment, but the issue is, the motion is on the table to um challenge the President's ruling. Okay, Alicia?
Um, I have a quick question before I make my comment and that is, is my motion being ruled out of order? Because it's in okay, is it out of order because it's not in the forty-eight hour section? Cause I don't, I'm not sure if it was clear to me whether or not that was ever answered. So it's not being ruled out of order underneath the forty-eight hour underneath the section of um, items not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours.
We're not even to the forty-eight hour rule. We're still in the meeting that is right following the discussion item. And so it's in the issue related to the fact that you made a motion, we weren't even to the forty-eight hour rule.
Okay, because that was a specific question that I asked that nobody answered. Because I also said I'd be happy to wait for that, but nobody gave me the answer as to whether or not it would be okay underneath that section of the meeting either. So again, it's just like very unclear to me as to like what is acceptable and what's not. Um, so my comments or my understanding of the process um, is that I'm understanding why I, cause I was not actually trying to make a motion at the last council meeting. I was trying to make an amendment to something that was on the floor, which I learned at the retreat was out of order because it was an automatic referral and that comes first. That makes complete sense to me. This, however, makes absolutely no sense to me because it's a completely different motion in a different setting. It will, but I I just am slightly confused. So if it's just the timing of when I said it, that's not acceptable. I understand that and I will accept and say it when we move on to the forty-eight hours. But I'm not even understanding why it's being ruled out of order, I think, here.
The only issue from my perspective is that we did not include action items on this agenda and it was not posted as an action item on this agenda.
Like at all overall, not just my specific, because we have had plenty of meetings where there are motions that are brought up that are not on the agenda and we still deal with those motions. So is it because there was no action items at all, period? Or is it because my motion was not on the agenda? I think I'm still unclear.
Um, Alicia, I don't believe that we've had motions. Well, I have to be here very careful how I say this. We've had motions when we were in the process of discussing something for action, people have taken, made motions, okay? Because the topic was there. But there was also a section and it was being discussed under action items. Or that it was later taken up under action items.
So we've never taken up motions underneath the forty-eight hours? Only under action items can motions ever be brought up.
We've even done a forty-eight hour one.
I'm, but I'm trying to understand if that's a rule. Like, is that part of the process? Cause that's not something I was aware of and I'm trying to understand. Like, is that a rule? You can only make a motion underneath an action item.
And if the item is posted under action.
Point of order, motions have been made under the forty-eight hour rule in the past, particularly with respect to resolutions that have come up less than forty-eight hours in advance. Um, but under the forty-eight hour rule, the topic has to be unanticipated, reasonably unanticipated forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mandy Jo.
Okay, Pam?
I was going to offer on that note that um a a new piece of information is the fact that Counselor Walker is not going to be available tomorrow. To me, that's, that puts it in a different category and might be considered worthy of forty-eight hours within, not known within forty-eight hours, but just offering that up.
I appreciate that, though I don't think that constitutes sufficient reason for forty-eight hour. Uh, Dorothy?
Well, it's true that whoever sets the agenda controls the meeting. I thought we were gonna vote and only when I find out the meeting turns out that we're not. So if you're gonna have a meeting again in the future where we're not gonna vote, we can't vote, we can't make a motion, let me know, cause I won't go.
Dorothy, I sent you an email this today and I was very clear, there would be no votes tonight. In addition to that, at the beginning of this meeting, I also reiterated everything that was in that email.
But that's too late at the beginning of the meeting, so I I
I sent it to you in an email today as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was working today, okay? I didn't get to reading most of my emails. I was teaching. So um, I wanna know, what is the only way? Having somebody make a motion for her who, absent member. That means her vote's not there. So obviously, that's, that's no remedy of any kind. It's just like wallpaper. Um, I'm just saying, I just feel very boxed in and I don't think that's a good thing to do. Um, that means that if we don't get a chance to vote on this issue, that the only way that we can express our unhappiness is to vote no on the debt restructuring. Is that the kind of position?
That is not the situation at all. Let me go over the process one more time.
How many votes does that need to pass? It takes two-thirds votes. How many people? How many yes votes?
Let me start from the beginning and go through the process, okay? Tomorrow, the Finance Committee meets and they will, at that time, two of us on the Finance Committee have said we will bring forward a motion to go to. Okay, at that point, the Finance Committee can discuss that and they can decide or decide any number of things, okay? When the Finance Committee finishes their meeting tomorrow, unless they decide they needed yet another meeting, when they finish their meeting tomorrow, that recommendation will come to the council on the third. At that time, anybody can make an amendment to the recommendation. Anybody, any counselor, not anybody else, any counselor can make an amendment to the recommendation of the Finance Committee. And at that point, the council votes, but in between there is the required public forum.
Here, the forum, yeah.
Okay, so it, this is not the last time. This is not the last chance tonight.
Okay. I did understand that and I'm just saying that you know what I'm saying.
And I I'm, I'm very sorry to be the bearer of rules. But it is the job, okay? It's the job. Whether I'm in the job or anybody else is in the job, it's the job.
Okay.
So you can be angry at me if you want. I'm used to it. Pat?
Thank you. I uh I remember uh, when we talked uh and set up this meeting, it was clear that there was gonna be no vote taken. It was created as a discussion. It was stated that way. Um, and the other thing that um you know, when I proposed it, we discussed it and they said there would be no vote. The other thing that uh, is happening is that Counselor Walker, Alicia decided and told people that she was gonna make a motion. Didn't matter what, she was gonna make a motion. She said this at the beginning of the meeting. Yes, she did. And it may, and the rules, and this was really important when we were together on Saturday. The rules are there to protect the majority and the minority. The rules are there so that a committee can be independent. I don't want how I'm gonna vote or not vote to affect Bob Hager or Hegner or anybody else on finance. I want his independent, clear mind and the whole committees. I want them coming to me so that I have a recommendation to look at. Because I want it to be there, cause it usually opens up things I didn't think about. So I think Counselor Walker, Alicia, that I think you're wrong, that you cannot make a motion. I'm not great with parliamentary procedure, but there are no action items. We discussed not having votes at this meeting. Emails went out and guaranteed that. So it does feel like um a manipulation of the process and that makes me uncomfortable.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I think it's been stated, but I feel uncomfortable that uh, Counselor Walker is not gonna be able to vote on her motion tomorrow. So that's, that just doesn't seem right. I mean, so I'm just gonna state that. The other thing, it's just feeling, I understood that there wasn't gonna be a vote on the override or the language for the override, but I guess I just, maybe I was misinformed, thought that I was under the impression a counselor could always make a motion and the motion could be voted on. But it's just, in this case, feeling a bit like a catch twenty-two because that's, I mean, what was publicly posted was that this whole meeting was dedicated to discussing the school and funding for the school and the override.
Mm-hmm.
So if a counselor makes a motion on that topic, it's seems like the public was well informed, that's why. But then it can't be so under the forty-eight hour rule because we can't say it wasn't unanticipated. Yeah, it wasn't unanticipated because there was a publicly posted meeting on this subject and then during the conversation, a motion was made. And it just seems that if we vote on the motion, that that's just a recommendation to the Finance Committee. So I it's just, it's
I under
feeling to me like a catch twenty-two.
I understa- believe me, it, I totally understand why it feels that way. I totally understand. Alicia?
Um, thank you, Lynn. So yes, I I did see the email that we did get today that said that this was not a voting meeting and that there were gonna be no votes. And I was actually confused about that. Not that I thought that we were planning to take votes, but that we would have a meeting where we are told ahead of time that there can be no votes. I was slightly confused about that, but I did see it. So I did wanna confirm, Lynn, that I did see that before this meeting. But today, not any other day, I did, that was not something that was clear to me at the last meeting when we set this meeting, that there was gonna be no action items. But I did see that me, that this morning and that's why I said that at the beginning of this meeting because I didn't understand that at all when we got that email. I was also working today, didn't have time to like respond and have, like, ask you personally, like, why is this the case? Is this something that can be challenged or cannot be the case? And that's why I said that at the beginning of this meeting. And when I said that at the beginning of this meeting, I would like to reserve the right that you said I had as a counselor to make a motion at any time. Nobody said anything. Everybody just said, okay, and we continued on with the meeting. And so I thought I was reserving that right to make my motion whenever I wanted. Um, but I also thought that it would fall under the forty-eight hour rule. So if this is being ruled on as as not in order because it's underneath the part of the agenda item where we're in the discussion the discussion and presentations, that I understand. And I would be happy to withdraw and remake my motion underneath the forty-eight, not, underneath the items not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours of the meeting. But it's not clear to me that that's what's being said. So if there, if Lynn possibly, you can state very explicitly again for me the reason why this is being ruled out of order, that would be very helpful for me because I feel like I'm still kind of confused.
The reason it's ruled out of order, although the question on the floor is whether to overturn that ruling, okay? Is because we did not list action items and therefore this was not an action item listed. That's the whole reason, right?
So, but this motion can or cannot be made under the I think I asked that question like three times already and I have not even before this was ruled as not in order. So that's the other slightly frustrating part is I asked that before this was ruled as not in order.
Do you see this, Athena, as legitimate under forty-eight hours?
I I question that this was not anticipated forty-eight hours before the meeting because we received a number of public comments about the ten million. It was discussed at a Finance Committee meeting forty-eight hours before today. So I have a doubt.
This is a completely different motion.
The um
I literally just made up the wording. I don't have it written down anywhere. No one has it written down anywhere. This is not the same motion that people were public commenting to. People were com- public commenting to the ten million. I am asking to include an additional five million. All of this is completely different, not reasonably anticipated. I don't know if you remember when you asked me to put the motion on the floor, Athena, but you could clearly hear me stumbling through trying to figure out how to word the motion. So I'm not quite sure how we would say that I had this whole motion planned because I actually didn't. Because I don't really, I'm still literally for the last like two council meetings and the last two Finance Committee meetings have been struggling to figure out when is the appropriate time to to maneuver this. Like, I've been constantly told, this is not it, this is not it, and I still can't figure out when is the right time. That's what I'm trying to do here.
I I understand the confusion. This frankly is a little bit of an uncertain area for all of us. We're all sort of looking around at each other, trying to figure out how to how to move forward. Um, I think that what's going on is we just wanna make sure that your suggestion is taken up correctly and in an appropriate way. Um, so the public forum on the third will be a meeting of the Finance Committee and the Finance Committee will have an opportunity to um, discuss its recommendation at that point. So a motion to amend the Finance Committee's recommendation could be taken up at that point. I think the concern about um, this not being anticipated forty-eight hours and ahead of time, um, it's not the specific motion that is the issue. It's rather the, the topic. Um, so I totally understand that you made the motion up at the, at the time and it wasn't it wasn't premeditated or anything like that. And that's, that's not really the issue. It's more that the, the topic was anticipated. So my suggestion at this point to help move things along is to vote on the uh, appeal of the President's decision. If that vote passes, then you, the appeal would be overturned and the council could then vote on your motion, Alicia.
Andy, you had your hand up because you had come up with some reference.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at the Attorney General's website page on the open meeting law as best I could. And um, they have a frequently asked questions section. And this does touch on that topic. And I won't read the whole thing unless it's requested. I'm only gonna read half of it. Um, but if people want the whole thing read, I will do so. Although a public body may consider a topic that was not listed in the meeting notice if unanticipated, the Attorney General strongly encourages public bodies to postpone discussion and action on topics that are controversial or may be of particular interest to the public if those topics were not listed in the meeting notice. Question is, again, that are controversial or may not, or or may be of particular interest to the public if those topics were not listed in the meeting notice. Since action was not listed in the Since action was not listed in the meeting notice, then the question, if it's controversial, the Attorney General's FAQ is discouraging consideration.
There is a motion, and it's been made and seconded. And I'm going to hope that the people who have their hands up are going to speak to that motion. Michelle?
I am, yes. Um, and I'd like to offer a different interpretation. I'm also looking at the mass.gov website on open meeting law, and I'm reviewing what information must meeting notices contain. And there is nothing that I can find um, that states that there is a special topic that needs to be identified as an action item. Um, what I am reading here is that it is essentially what topics will be discussed, and then actions can be taken um, from the discussion item. So I would like to see where in the open meeting law it states that an action item has to be separated out in the agenda um, in order for a motion to be made on a topic that is being discussed in a meeting. I'm looking at our agenda, and it says, "Presentation and Discussion: Appropriation and Debt Authorization for the Elementary School Building Project." Um, so we're well within, Alicia's motion is well within um, the topic that's being discussed. And without there being anything that I can find in the open meeting law um, that states that it must be presented in the agenda as an action item in order for an action to be taken, um, I, I strongly um, appeal to my colleagues uh, to overturn the Chair's uh, ruling here.
Thank you. Anika?
Well, first, I would like to thank Athena for being prepared with us before we arrived on Saturday at eight-thirty in the morning to go over so much of what we are talking about right now. And um, you know, it was said in that meeting, um, that because this was used as an example, that we wouldn't be voting. We've heard it two other times, so I just would caution us when we speak to the public again, like was brought up, and we misinform the public that we weren't aware of this and further aid into the divide that is brewing over this. So with that said, regardless of what happens, and I do understand that what some of my respected colleagues do want to know where we all stand, I will not be uh, going there this evening. Um, I was prepared um, to have a bit more time and look at more information and um, you know, talk with more constituents that I have, you know, promised that. So um, I, but, but again, like, I find what is really disturbing is this is so many of us were right here. We even received a packet um, from Athena to, to refer to. So I would just, again, if there's questions, there's questions, but please, let's just, you know, stop misinforming the, the public this way.
Lynn, may I, may I answer Michelle's question?
Please.
Michelle, you're absolutely right. The open meeting law isn't specific about how items are listed on the agenda. The open meeting law requires a list of topics to be discussed. So you're right about that. The council's practice has been to list presentation and discussion items and action items separately. And that's what we've done consistently throughout our agendas, so that the public would reasonably anticipate that this is a discussion item only and not an action item. So, like I said, it does get into a little bit of a murky area. But it would be unclear to the public that the council were going to act on something tonight if it were listed as a presentation and discussion item only. I think that the members of the public who look at our meeting notice and see that something is listed as presentation and discussion could reasonably assume that there would be no votes taken. Does that answer your question?
Michelle? I do appreciate that. It does answer my question, but a council practice is different than saying that something is out of order.
Right, so, so it's, it's a little bit threading the needle between the open meeting law, the council's rules, and our precedent that we've set by listing things the way we have in our meeting notices.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think that if we were talking about taking the vote on the appropriation, that would completely make sense. We're talking just about um, a motion to, that a counselor is making in good faith to recommend to the Finance Committee um, uh, um, something that, um, you know, Alicia was elected across all political parties to represent a constituency that many of us don't have access to, that many of us don't, and I don't say all of us, I'll speak for myself, that I don't have access to, that I don't necessarily identify with. And she is representing those folks here, and we, I feel, I will again speak for myself making it so difficult for her to simply bring forward an initiative, uh, a, a motion that she feels is representing her constituents. And I am, it's just, I, it's, I don't, I, I do, again, I do not feel that this motion is out of order, and that's why I've made the appeal. And um, maybe we need to just take it up and a vote at this point.
Alicia?
Sorry, my hand is just up, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Question on the floor is whether or not you agree with the President's ruling. If you agree with the President's ruling, then you vote no. If you don't agree with the President's ruling, and you feel that we should consider this question tonight, you vote yes. Dorothy? Ask your question.
Okay, can we state it without the double negative? I really have trouble with these double negatives.
If you do not agree with my ruling, then you vote yes. If you do agree with my ruling, you vote no.
Okay.
I, I have no problem making that clarification, and I agree, I don't like double negatives either. Probably because it's now ten o'clock. We're going to begin with a vote. Um, and I'm going to start with Shalony Ballmum.
No.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Yes, but I think you skipped that.
Yes, you agree with the ruling.
Oh, wait.
No.
Yes, I agree with the appeal.
No.
With the appeal.
All right. Okay, let's, let's get it straight now, okay? If the motion on the table is to appeal the President's ruling, if you agree with that motion, you vote yes. Yes, to appeal, thank you. If you don't agree with that motion, you vote no, do not appeal, okay? All right, we'll start again. Shalony?
No.
Anna?
I'd like to vote, yes.
I'm sorry, it's, is Pat next?
Yes.
Yeah, twice in a row, no.
Anna?
Yes.
I have to get my list out, sorry. Hold on, just give me a second. Since it's my decision, I'm going to abstain. Mandy Jo?
No.
Anika?
Abstain.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dorothy? Yes. Pam?
Yes.
Kathy?
Abstain.
Andy?
No.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
So we have six yeses, four nos, and three abstentions?
Who is the fourth no? I've got Pat, Mandy, and Andy. Who is the fourth no?
Shalony?
Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and the three abstentions, so does it pass? It passes, thank you. And given that we just went, went through this about when do votes pass, when do abstentions count or not count? Just for the sake of really bringing in what we all were in our retreat about.
Yeah.
In this case, abstentions don't count.
That still doesn't make sense to me when we say abstentions count or don't count. This, this vote is a majority present and voting.
Okay, the majority present and voting in this case, we're
Ten counselors voted, so a majority would be six, six voted yes.
Right, so, we are now going back to Alicia's um, motion. Alicia, your motion is to ask the Finance Committee to consider the ten million.
It's to recommend the council suggests the Finance Committee consider the use of an additional five million to be included in the debt authorization.
The additional five million, okay? That is, all the motion is, is asking the Finance Committee to consider that. It's not saying you agree with it, it's only to ask the Finance Committee to consider it, okay? Are there any questions about what we're voting on? Shalony?
Okay, so I feel like we're going round and round, but again, my understanding was that we're getting new information from um, Sean, and we're gonna discuss it. And then the Finance Committee is gonna discuss and give us a recommendation. So, but right now, we are giving them a recommendation, so then they can give us a recommendation.
This is a request that the Finance Committee consider and, an additional five million from reserves be used toward the school. That's how I hear this. It's just a request that they consider. And I think Alicia has done this because she won't be there tomorrow, and she wants to make sure it will happen. Does it need a second? It, it does need a second. Shane seconds? Shane seconds, okay. Are there any further questions or conversations, and I'll explain. This is a vote that the Finance Committee consider an additional five million from reserves to be used toward the school. Michelle?
Um, I appreciate you making that distinction, and um, I am certainly in favor of the Finance Committee considering it. Um, and I think that the Finance Committee should, as it already has begun to do, um, strongly consider this and the political components of this. Um, I think that Sean said it best when he said that uh, this project is essential. Basically, if this project doesn't pass, we're putting the other projects at risk. Um, and I think we really have to weigh carefully whether, um, what is a, a bigger risk here? If we, we have, there's always something when it comes to a townwide vote, in my experience in Amherst, that has the potential to kill a really good project. And I think that we have to strongly consider what that something is, and if this is that something, and if this is the moment, we need to really deeply understand that votes, when you, when you go to cast your vote, it is very emotional. And no matter how many charts we have provided to people, no matter how much we have told them about um, any of this as concretely as we have tried to do, at the end of the day, it's emotional. And I think we have to recognize, really recognize the human um, aspect to this. And so I thank uh, the Finance Committee, I hope this motion will pass, and I, I thank them for the work that they've already done. And I thank Alicia um, for really pressing hard to have this considered.
Mandy Jo?
Basically, for the reasons Pat and Shalony stated, that um, seems like this is a circular request of the Town Council telling the Finance Committee what they want the Finance Committee to recommend potentially. And I know people can consider the words "consider" differently by definition. Um, I'm going to abstain. I don't believe, though, that the Finance Committee should consider the political ramifications. That's what we were elected to do. I want a neutral recommendation from the Finance Committee about what they think is best for this town financially. I don't know what it is, and because that's the, because I want a neutral recommendation, I'm gonna abstain. I don't want us and our political considerations putting, putting a lever on one way or the other for the Finance Committee, which is why I'm going to abstain.
Are there any other, okay, Shalony?
Yeah, I really do wanna hear from the Finance Committee because they have the expertise in planning and making assumptions based on past trends and information. Uh, so I wanna hear from them how this decision is gonna impact the future projects. And then it's for us to, as Mandy Jo said, to make the decision. And plus, I again wanna emphasize that I think all of us in council are very committed to our community to hear what they're saying, where they're, where they're hurting. And I encourage all of you who are interested in affordable housing, we're having a next conversation in CRC uh, with the trustees of affordable housing. So that's where those conversations live, and that's where that action needs to happen over there. And over here, we're talking about a very well-planned process that has taken over ten years of careful planning and building up reserves in order to ensure that all our projects go through. And it is, I know I keep hearing it's just about the school, no, sixty-seven, or what was it, sixty-five point four percent of the voters voted for the library. The South Amherst residents have been waiting for a fire station. The DPW, we've heard, is dilapidated. So all these four projects are part of this planning process. So I, I really am counting on, no pressure of Finance Committee members, but we really trust you, and we want you to do a very thorough work of what is gonna ensure that all four projects go through, and then it's on us. Thank you.
Dorothy?
I have trouble unmuting. Money is political. Money is always political. We need to do one thing at a time if we're gonna get anything done. If we can only have the long-range plan, we're never gonna get anywhere. So we have to think about the public, we have to bring the public with us and to do it successfully. So I, you know, you can talk all the grand schemes you want, but question, what did you do on the school? Did you do everything you could to make it clear to the public how we were trying to do our best to meet their needs and to answer their questions? That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the vote. Again, the vote in this case is whether or not to ask the Finance Committee to consider adding an additional five million against, for the project from reserves. From, yeah, reserves, just let's leave it simple, okay? Patty Angeles?
Oh goodness, I'm bouncing between no and abstain. I don't like, I don't think it's fair to the public that there was an impromptu mo-, motion. I think the Finance uh, Committee offered Alicia a chance to have someone speak her motion. I think they're certainly considering it, so I'm gonna vote no. Doesn't mean I don't want the money. But damn it, people stop playing.
Anna?
No.
Lynn Griesmer abstains. Mandy Jo?
Abstain.
Anika Loebz?
Abstained.
Michelle Miller?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Abstain.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Alicia Walker?
Yes.
The motion passes?
Shalony hasn't voted.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shalony.
Yeah, I'm with Pat between abstain and no, and so I'm gonna say no.
Did you say no?
Yes.
Okay. Six yeses, three nos, four abstentions. In this case, the motion passes and the Finance.
Just a point of information, what was the voting quantum on this one?
The voting quantum on this one was nine.
Was it present and voting or just present? Okay.
The quantum was nine, okay? And it's,
I was asking whether the vote required was, was based on present and voting or just present.
Present and voting.
Present, thank you. Okay. Are there any other comments at this time? Andy, would you please adjourn the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is adjourned till tomorrow at 3:00.
And the Town Council is adjourned. It's 10:15.